Regular board meeting dated Monday, July 18th, 2022. Catherine, take your role.
Trustee Mahoney.
Here.
Trustee Kuntzey.
Present.
Trustee Britton.
Here.
Trustee Saviano.
Here.
Trustee Tribber.
Here.
Trustee Sodder.
Here.
And President Lionel.
Here. And if you'll rise and speak for President Lewis.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our hand.
Thank you. All right, that's going to take us right into our consent agenda. If we could have a motion for the items.
Can I, can I raise a possibility of bringing the public comments up to, all the public comments up ahead of the agenda?
I just, I had already checked off.
We got you.
You're right, you're right.
We have a public comment section here for agenda items only. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to?
Do we need a motion to move up the?
Yeah.
To move up, but on agenda items is where it is, but yeah, to move it up.
So I, yeah, I just, I would like to make a motion to move up the public comment on non-agenda items listed as item 10.
To be included with?
To be included immediately following item four, public comment on agenda items.
Second. Catherine?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay. Would anybody in the audience like to address the board on an agenda item?
We have Shannon Cowell, Dundee Township Foundation.
Hi.
Hi.
Hello, so I'd like to speak on agenda item number E, selection of the respondent or multiple respondents to Summit Square request for proposal. So just a couple of comments that I do have. As you guys are aware, we will be speaking about this tonight. We were notified on Friday, late Friday, that our proposal was rejected. We saw that through the packet because it was stating that it was not clear how we were going to pay for the association dues. So when we filled out their request for proposal, it wasn't a requirement at that time. We needed to prove or show that we had adequate funds to purchase the units that we were interested in. So a couple of questions that I have for the board. At what point did the requirement change? Were the other folks that are making proposals, were they aware of those requirements? If so, how were they made aware? We were also told that over the course of a couple of weeks, if there was any questions about our RFP, there could be question and responses. We didn't get any communication from the board to say that there was a problem or a concern. Did you have a comment?
Well, I don't want to interrupt you, but your proposal was not rejected. I just wanted you to know that. In the packet, it says it wasn't recommended, but that's not the same.
Okay, thank you for clarifying. I appreciate that. If there is a requirement that we do need to be able to show whether or not we had the funds to be able to pay for the association dues, we are prepared to be able to provide that tonight. Again, just wanting to know when the requirement changed, how others were made aware, if that is the case. And I just want to point out the recommendation, our, what our bid was at, it was well over double the price of other folks. So I just hope that you guys will take that in consideration when you guys go to vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, was anybody else interested in addressing the board on an agenda item?
Or a non-agenda item.
A foundation member here, I can't read the name. Who filled this out?
Susan Verda?
Yes, yes. Fancy handwriting. Sorry.
Good evening, my name is Susan Verda, I live in West Dundee, and I'm a board member for the Dundee Township Foundation. To echo Shannon's comments, I believe the foundation board in general, along with some of the people who have worked along with us, were not only shocked, but really disappointed in the recommendation from staff that our proposal not be accepted. Our bid is the highest that you have received at 110,000, 60,000 over the next proposal in line. During the recent elections, a lot of you focused on the fact that the fiscal responsibility of the village was a primary consideration. And I think that that has to be taken into consideration with, with this particular bid. We will have the cash within five days in your hands, and we certainly have the cash on hand now. You have had the advantage of having seen what the foundation can do and has done over and above the commitments they have made to you. The 611 building has never looked better on the areas that we have approached and worked on and made safer, so that it has become a better asset to allow you to put the building up for sale. We hope you will consider that as well in the requirements. The commitment and stateability, stability rather, in the completed renovations is something that we are definitely committing to, and we definitely wish to make the village of East Dundee very proud of. It is in an entry point into the village, and we want that to showcase some of the things that we are doing. And I would think you would wish that as well. The foundation, as I said, has exceeded the commitments that we have made to you. We have no reason to give you any doubt that we would do anything less than that in the future. RFPs are relatively easy to go through. You tell us what you want, we say yes, we can do this, or no, we cannot. And we feel we have done that. So we would like you to reconsider, certainly to have staff reconsider their recommendation to you. It's a great asset, and we want to make it better. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Was anyone, excuse me, was anybody else interested in addressing the board on an agenda item? Sir?
Or a non-agenda item, I think you said. But, but yeah, that's next.
First timer.
No, I'm fine.
My name is Peter, I live on Michigan Avenue in East Dundee here. I kind of wanted to bring up this issue of the event that occurred at Rosie's over the weekend. It is kind of, not kind of, it is impacting the quality of life that we have had on Michigan Avenue. And it's not only the actual event that went on, it's, it's gotten more to be an outdoor music venue than anything else. I support local businesses, I've hosted and spent thousands of dollars at Rosie's. I have no objections to how great they are for the village and how great they are for the community, but there has to be some sort of a limit on a noise. Right next to Rosie's is a couple that are well over seven years old. They cannot take it. I live next to the house to them, and I can't take it. There's been four nights of outdoor music that wasn't, none of, none of this even was told to any of the residents. I was told by one of the trustees that the bar would come out and notify everybody, and that they've put in flyers in mailboxes, that they've knocked on doors, which subsequently I have proof that that never happened. I have a camera, just as simple as I can rewind the last 30 days, and there was never anybody that showed up, not even a lick of word. I had events scheduled for that weekend, two, Saturday and Sunday. There was two separate parties, two separate events at my house. One of them was a birthday, and the other one was a graduation party. So, you know, without being told that ahead of time, you know, I could have rescheduled mines, I could have left out of town, I could have done a lot of things differently, only if I had the communication to be able to make a decision on where I want to be at that time when the music's blasting until midnight. I wanted to know how this can, how we can tame how much music we have on the outdoor. I have nothing, again, I have nothing against the business, I've spent plenty of money in there, I have no ill will, I just want the peace and quiet that everybody else wants. They want to have music, great, take it inside, who cares? But four days in a row, and then some of it starting, some of the work starting at like 6:45 in the morning, boards banging, getting the stage up, completely unacceptable. And I'm pretty sure it's, it wasn't the intent of the owners to aggravate anybody. I'm well aware of that, they did it for a good cause, I agree with the cause. What I don't agree with is how many times they're able to play music outside to the point where I can hear it inside, especially live percussion, especially amplified sounds. Dealing with being audio tech for quite a while and, and knowing how sound works, pretty sure West Dundee wasn't impressed either, because the only thing that happens in open air is it gets amplified if you don't have trees and something to block the sound off, because sound actually bounces, it never disappears, it echoes. So my comment is, how can we make sure that we don't have this issue from now on? I think this would have been a perfect event for the depot or a park or any other public spot, and there would have been, been a problem. The only problem that I see is that nobody was notified, nobody, not one person was notified on the block, from my understanding. So between talking to some of the neighbors, you know, all the neighbors support Rosie's, and we love it, we do. But there comes a time where enough is enough, and this weekend was enough. And I would like to see something in, in the lines of some type of a noise limit that will be implied next time there's a bigger event. And honestly, it's, it's one of those where I'm not mad at anybody, I can get past the people that are getting into their cars drunk and leaving, I can deal with all the trash that is left after the customers leave, and that includes broken bottles, many, many trash. I can deal with the revving of the engines at midnight, I'm a car guy. I can deal with all of that. What I can't deal with is not having that type of a communication and knowing ahead of time that something like this is going to go down. And the worst part about it is, is it was plastered all over the side of the building, but there was no reasonable attempt to get a hold of, even the first three houses would have been fine. Most of the residents on that half of the block, if you account for the four flat that's right across the shoe from Rosie's, it's all older people. So I love music, I DJ, I'm still DJ for the past 15 years, I have nothing against nobody, I just want to put a limit on how loud it gets and how many times can it happen. It can't happen four days a week, because you're going to have aquas by Barbie Girl from my yard at full blast, and that's what happened yesterday. So I'll take the blame for that, pretty open about it, but I cannot have, live in a place where somebody takes me off every weekend. And the worst part about it is, is that the live events have gone on now every weekend, two, three times a week, for the past five weeks documented. So there has to be some type of a, a limit on it, it's not a venue, it's a bar, I enjoy it, but enough is enough.
Well, thank you, I appreciate your coming. To be honest, we, well, actually, I apologize for the, the less than positive experience you had with it. We've had a number of events like this at Rosie's in the past and hadn't had any problems, but if the ball's been dropped in a couple of different areas, then that's something we can look at. Certainly, we have noise ordinances as well with the ability to monitor the levels of the noise, that we can police that, so.
Yeah, so.
Can I ask you a question, actually?
Sure.
You mentioned the noise not on the event, I mean, the event is over.
Yeah.
We can't do anything like that. But the live music that occurs, when it's inside, does that have the same?
No, if it's inside, I would never hear it.
Gotcha. That's all I want.
Unless somebody soundsproofed my house, I'll be fine with it. I can sit at home when they're having the event, I don't have to be out on my yard, even though I probably would like to. It's not a, it's not about anything, it's just, we got to come to a conclusion as to how many times will I expect? Because if the board does nothing and the village says it's okay, well, guess what? I'm out. I mean, this was not a problem until this year. Let's just put it like that, nothing.
Okay.
And then on top of it, the police were called yesterday about my music. Who doesn't like Barbie Girl? Come on. I'll tell you who doesn't like it. The musician that couldn't focus on his metronome while playing his instrument with my music playing, takes real skill to be able to decipher two metronomes at once. He didn't have that skill, and nobody could, it's almost impossible. So I don't want to be that guy, but to be fair, if they can put on music, so can I.
Yeah, okay.
All right, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All righty. Anybody else in the audience who would like to address? Gare? Floor is yours.
I'm a sucker to one of the year.
Absolutely.
On your own Rosie's, it didn't go down right. This is what I found next door in my house, all these hours just like. Unfortunately, I had one of my toys, gave it to him to go do it. And his response to me was, why he didn't do it? Because I said, I've got to go, I, I have to hand these out. I know, I got, you have to hand these out, I have to hand these out to the people and stuff. I said, I got to go, can you just mind taking these and putting them in? I will.
And it did.
And when I come back, I had to chase him down because I'm a geological digger or something since he's, he's a junior in college. And it's just a misword that he said that, you know, I, I've got to put these out. I said, I'm putting these out, you know, and I said, but, you know, here, just assume for me, I gotta, I'd be doing the same thing, walking, putting them in, I've got to go restaurant depot, blah, blah, blah. I apologize for the music, you should have had this, it was probably two and a half weeks before then, before they got. I haven't even long enough time to make a pond event.
No, that's.
Oh, I know, I know. And that's, that's why I'm here. I mean, no one here is coming. I wanted to give myself a sincere apology to anybody that knows, we're never going to have an event like that again. We, that's my promise. And we didn't, you were saying four days of music, we had a solo player playing inside on Friday night.
It was outside.
No, it was inside. It was inside, it was raining.
Oh, I'm sorry, Thursday night you had.
Thursday night, we didn't have, nobody playing Thursday night?
You didn't have the radio, was?
Nope. And Sunday, we had, we played like in a day, two to, two to five out front, another solo guy. I actually go with the solo wax, Saturday was way out of line, and, you know, that's why I'm here. It was too short, it was, it was too short, it wasn't planned out real well, you know, and the event was, would have been really nice, being down in the park, but, you know, it was Rubicon, they wanted the pictures, they wanted it short, like a nice thing. To me, people coming, at least coming to about sound and stuff, it bothers me because I've been there 11 years, and I think I've only had them come a handful of times for sound, and it's mainly like when we have, like, we've had weddings upstairs and stuff, and in winter, you keep the windows open, and it goes right out, and, you know, no leaves or nothing, it's bad. And I, and like I said, I'm here to apologize, I can tell you, I'll never have an event like that again. And, and I will be way in advance if it ever gets more than a little thing, you know, I do solo people, and I, I thought of, you know, I, I'm very in tune with the neighborhood, and I had, and I could really apologize, when I saw these, that's why I was here. I found these Saturday when I was digging, and I got on the phone right away, was calling, 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 couldn't get a hold of them. I got a hold of them yesterday, and he tells me I'm starting, I just want, I mean, I wanted to call him to rock, you didn't have this. I mean, and it was short, and it was too short as it was. And that's my apology to you guys, I, I don't want to be putting my neighbors in not thinking I'm not a friendly bar in a neighborhood about it. I'm very conscious about the sound and stuff, and I'm sorry. I can almost, you know, I'll, I'll say that every time I see you about it, it won't happen again.
Well, we appreciate it.
And it's just like, this is a solo thing, and I don't mean to be, but this is, this bar made me jump off the roof when I, I come across these.
Well, the conversation I had with you earlier.
Yeah.
Day, day before yesterday or whenever, was about a new venue, a new area.
Right.
In the future, so I think that'd probably go a long way towards mitigating all this, so, yeah, I appreciate it.
You know what, it was a nice thing, the mistakes were plentiful.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, the thing is that the parking issue, I'm talking and taking people, my neighborhood's parking spots away, which bothers me on events, you know, it really does. Because if I lived there, that'd be the one thing that would bother me, how do you plan for a party?
Yeah.
As I said, I keep going back to Europe, and I'm sorry it ruined it, or made it bad, bad time, but that was not my intention, I, you know, my intention was to help somebody do a good thing for their cause, and it's just like.
That's a tough balance.
I lost, I mean, it cost me a lot of money personally, myself, to have that, and I'm just like, so it's just like, I'm just here to let everybody know, it won't, I will be super in advance on anything that's bigger than a solo act and stuff like that. I'm, I'm, I'm really not, you know, trying to be a problem in the community.
No, 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 we wouldn't expect that, we appreciate you coming.
Thanks for that.
No, yeah. No, but it was.
Thank you, Gare.
Thank you, Gare, appreciate it. Okay. Anybody else would like to address the board on either an agenda or a non-agenda item? Okay, seeing none, then we can get right into the meat of it, we'll go to the consent agenda, if I could have a motion?
I will move to approve the village board meeting minutes dated May 2nd, 2022, also the village board meeting minutes dated May 16th, 2022, and the committee of the whole meeting minutes dated June 6th, 2022.
Second.
All right, does anybody have any questions or changes they'd like to make to the minutes? No? Wonderful, Catherine?
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Kuntzey.
Yes.
Trustee Britton.
Yes.
Trustee Saviano.
Yes.
Trustee Tribber.
Yes.
And Trustee Sodder.
Yes.
Okay. Well, that takes us to our regular agenda items, and our first one is going to be the recognition of outgoing planning and zoning commissioners, and I have a little presentation I'd like to make to a few that I know that are here, and a few others. First, I think we have Gwen Bernstein, I don't think Gwen's with us tonight, but she's been serving on the P&amp;Z for over 25 years. Really something. We also have Paul Meyer, who I unfortunately, he can't be, but I understand, he's been with us for over 25 years. So I've been trustee since 07, and we're going to tell you, Paul's been a fixture on that board ever since then, and we're going to get a hold of him and Gwen as well. But we have Sue Holloman, I see Sue's with us, and she's been planning and zoning commissioner since 06 until now, so it's been about 16 years. So Sue, we have this present, this, we have this little certification recognizing your efforts and service to the village, along with a little token of appreciation from the village. Would you like to? Present, please.
Thank you very much, it was a good 16 years, I think we had a good team, and I think we made some really good decisions.
I did too, I did too, a lot of that came out, we really appreciate, we need more people like this.
And I wish the new team, the new P&amp;Z team all the best of luck, and I hope they enjoy like I did.
Sure they will.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have Regina Muscat, Regina's been on the board since 2013, that is 79 years, that's pretty good.
Just missed 10 years.
Just missed 10 years, yeah. So we also have a little certificate of appreciation for you as well, and a little token.
Thank you very much, hopefully it's still the law of East Dundee.
And we have Howard Chapp, now Howard's been, well, he's been a fixture at the company for a long time, he was village trustee from 01 to 05, and then planning and zoning from 1997 to 01, and then served again in planning and zoning since 09 to the present, so again, he's been a, he's been a real namesake. I see Howard here today, so we'll have to give him a buzz and make sure he gets his little, pretty daddy as well. And Steve Backy as well, now Steve's been on for a while, same, he came on at the same time he did Regina, I think he's been on since 09, and I see Steve here. And that leaves us, well, I can say, Gwen, Paul, Howard, and Steve. Regina and Sue, but then the others are staying on, so, yeah, we really appreciate all your help. Oh, good, okay. All right, now that's going to take us to item B, if we could have a motion.
I will make a motion to approve an ordinance amending the village of East Dundee village code regarding video gaming terminal requirements.
Okay. Now, this one might need a little bit of explanation here, so Erica, would you mind walking us through this one a little bit?
Sure, so we had a committee of the whole meeting in June where we discussed whether or not it made sense to incorporate guidelines for video gaming terminal operations in the village, as you know, we have quite a few. And at that time during the discussion, the board decided to direct staff to draw up guidelines regarding noise, so that it wouldn't emanate beyond the terminal itself, a limitation on the number of terminals per square foot of a, of a, of establishment, and the third one was escaping me right now. So those have been drafted in an ordinance for your review, and if there's any questions, happy to take them. Also, this only applies to people who would apply for a license going forward, everybody else is grandfathered in, so operation's normal for anybody that's an existing license holder.
So volume can be controlled on these machines, which allows, you know, the operator, I guess, to go ahead and comply with this, and then, because certainly they're not going to be able to put a partition or separate room for the gaming, so volume control on the machine is really the only way around it. Are there any other questions, comments anybody on the board would like to make? No? Catherine?
I have a question.
Oh, sorry.
For sound level, is that a enforceable or scientific way to say no one outside of the one person can hear? Because I don't think that's really possible, is there just like a certain decibel level from three feet away that would make a little more sense to say something enforceable?
Well, ambient noise is kind of tough, you know, we do have meters that allow us to measure sound from a distance, but it's really only been for situations for like music and so forth, and I don't know that we really have anything for that close proximity, but I'm sure we probably adapt to do that. Okay. Are there any?
It's going to probably go on a complaint basis, I would imagine.
Yep.
People start complaining, they'll call the village, and then they'll have to go out there and tell them to turn their volume down.
Yeah, that's exactly how. Something along that line, it's unfortunate, but I mean, if, if you have one patron who's in your establishment and another one who's in your establishment playing a game and the game's too loud, you know, it's kind of like the jukebox being too loud as well, you know, you just have to tone it down.
A cover-all way to just say, turn it down.
Yeah.
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 And then the other question is, the hours, like making it so that people can drink at 8:00 AM, is that part of this?
That's the next one.
Okay.
Actually, it's two.
Then that's all that I had.
Okay, great. So item B, Catherine, take your role.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Kuntzey.
Yes.
Trustee Britton.
Yes.
Trustee Saviano.
Yes.
Trustee Tribber.
Yes.
And Trustee Sodder.
Yes.
Okay, it'll take us to item C, if we could have a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve an ordinance amending Chapter 16, 116, of the village of East Dundee village code to add a new Class B-5 liquor license to allow for the sale of both packaged beer, wine. to allow for the sale of both packaged beer, wine, and spirits for off-premises consumption and beer and wine for on-premises consumption. Second.
Okay. Is there... Well, Erica would you like to do this one?
Sure. So, again, at the same board meeting last month, we reviewed a request from an existing convenience store in the community to add video gaming. In order to accomplish that, they would have to have a liquor license accompanying that request. This ordinance was drafted that would allow them to comply with current state requirements regarding video gaming. And it's been modified and has all of the parts of it that are required in order to have his existing operation unchanged and then to also add the on-premise consumption, which I set the hours at 8:00 to midnight. Those are arbitrary. If the board would like to adjust them as they see fit, then you can do that. But the hours of to-go are blanket across the village. So, those are the same to-go hours as any establishment currently in the village.
Well... Okay. Yeah. Nevermind, sorry.
So, my only question about the hours with 8:00 AM, and this might not be a necessary change, but looking at what some of the other places in town, like when they're open, like some of our gaming venues, they open at 9:00. So, do we want to just say 9:00? Or, like Dolly's is open at 9:00 AM?
Well, I would only say that those other venues have the opportunity to stay open later than midnight. So, they're getting...
Well, the bars do, but they...
But the games shut down.
The gaming, I thought Dolly's closed at...
Well, like the Gaming Cafe on 25 is open till, I think, 2:00 AM.
Oh.
So, I'm just saying that those establishments have the opportunity to serve that late night crowd. And maybe these guys have this opportunity to serve the 8:00 AM crowd.
The breakfast.
The breakfast crowd. Yeah, it was just a suggestion. It's not...
Well, I think if the hours reflect the majority of establishments that are, that have gaming in them, then I think we're good there. If we find that for this particular class of license, we need to adjust that as we go, we can. You know, I mean, that can always be amended. So...
Yeah, that works for me.
Okay. Are there any other comments, questions? Catherine?
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Kuntzey?
Yes.
Trustee Britton?
Yes.
Trustee Saviano?
Yes.
Trustee Tribber?
Yes.
And Trustee Sodder?
Yes.
Okay. There you have it. A new liquor license, a new class, I should say. All right. So, that'll take us to item D then, if we can have a motion?
I will make a motion to approve an ordinance increasing the number of Class B-5 liquor licenses and the number of video gaming permits for Dundee Marathon.
A second.
Okay. So, this one is just to approve the license that we just created the class for it. Now, we're going to issue the license. So, anybody have any questions?
Well, my only question is, I guess it's not a question, much of a statement, but it shows 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 machines here. I mean, you heard that we have a new ordinance now that, you know, limits you per your square footage. I don't know the math to know if you are or not. But you'll have to make sure that that works.
Exactly, yeah. Because it was, he has 3,100 square feet. So, whatever the ordinance allows for 3,000 square feet is what he will open it.
Yes.
So, it's just four, he gets four.
Okay.
We'll push him aside. Just kidding.
All right.
You can't get closer to the church, though. That's the... Careful there. Careful. Be very careful. Yes.
Okay. Is there any other questions or comments? No? All right, Catherine?
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Kuntzey?
Yes.
Trustee Britton?
Yes.
Trustee Saviano?
Yes.
Trustee Tribber?
Yes.
And Trustee Sodder?
Yes.
Okay. That'll take us then to item E. And this is really not a motion as much as it is a selection of respondents. So, Scott, would you want to read this one in just to be official?
Sure. We're going to have a, well, we're going to have a selection of respondent or multiple respondents from the responses to the Summit Square RFP, which will possibly follow with a motion to accept. Would it not?
Well, there'll probably be, once the selection is made, we'll probably need to finalize a contract. So, we won't really need a motion.
Going anywhere tonight.
Direction.
I think it's more direction.
Direction, yes, is what I would say. Because we can't draft it on the spot.
No.
No?
Try. All right. Well, Erica, I'm going to ask you to run us through this one. Now, you received all the RFPs from the respondents that we had. And through the criteria that was set up to make that selection, you're going to have any recommendations. So, would you mind running us through it?
Sure. So, the board had requested earlier this spring that we issue an RFP allowing anybody in the community or beyond to submit responses, to put in a proposal for a proposed use of village-owned property at 611 Main Street as the village board has decided there's no future use for the village to use that property for. So, an RFP was drafted. It was publicized. And it was open until May 25th. I just wanted to make a note that there was no change to the RFP during its iteration. It was put up in April. It was up for the five or six weeks. And then it closed. And all the submissions that were in the packet were the ones that were received. There was one submission requirement that proof of financial capability to execute, including bank statements, proof of funds, loan approval, to prove that the proposer has financial capability to purchase, maintain, renovate, and pay monthly assessments, was part of the initial RFP. So, nothing did change in that respect. I know there's some concern about one particular proposer who didn't include bank statements or a loan, any kind of loan approval. But the purpose of doing an RFP is that everybody has the fair and same similar chance to submit. And what's submitted is what is usually judged on. And that way, nobody has unfair or indistinct advantage over anybody else. And the decision's made based on what's been submitted. Now, this is just an RFP. We can select one. We can select multiple. We can reject all bids. Or we can go, you know, direct staff to go negotiate with a particular party if we have an interest. You know, this is broad board discretion. You guys get to decide which makes the most sense for the community and whether that's a long-term need that's being filled or whether that's a short-term, you know, who has the most money to provide today. Like, all of those things are factors that can be made part of the decision-making process. So, you know, I included that as, you know, what I would say was fair and equitable. But certainly, I did not say that it was rejected on the whole. I said that it was, it was incomplete in the evaluation as I compared it to all the other ones that were submitted. So, you know, with that, like I said, there's carte blanche decision here for, or to direct staff to go forward with any or all of these or none of them. And I'm looking forward to hearing what you all are thinking. Okay?
Who would like to start us out?
I'll start.
Okay.
I'll start. Well, you know, thank you for doing such a great job. I'm trying to put this together and really getting the score sheet for all of the different attributes and how the different, the different applicants' proposals would stack up next to each other over a variety of different factors. And I want to thank all the people that did propose that are here tonight and who might be listening to this for putting in their proposals for this property. You know, when you look at the scoring, there were definitely the top two. The top, one that was scored by the committee. However, as noted by the second highest scoring group, was $60,000 less than, than the top one. So, and it still fulfilled all of our goals to get rid of or to dispose of the responsibility for the village to own this property that we don't have any use for. So, a couple of things that I also want to take into account that I don't know, I have been, Trish had reached out to me. Do you have any, were you guys part of the process for putting together the RFP and the financial information? Or was that handled by somebody else?
So, we had discussions around it. It was handled by someone else.
Okay. Okay. So, I think it would be fiscally irresponsible for me to, to award the proposal to the person that had the highest score, but the less than half of what the second person did without at least trying to get the bank statements and everything else that are necessary. Susan, you also said in one of the things that I tried to tease out of Trish and some of my communication with her today, just to make sure that we're doing this as an above-board, very fair practice, was that you have done a lot of renovations that if you were forced to leave or to move and not have the space anymore, you would be losing all of that investment that you have made into it. And she was saying it was around $50,000 of investment that you guys not have put into the property already. You, Susan had said you had made, you'd followed through on your commitments, and that's great. But I want to just highlight that fact that I would like staff to do two things. Number one, get the financial statements that are needed that would satisfy you. And also, work with and negotiate with the person that had the highest score to see if they can come up in their price or interested in coming up in their price anymore on the property. So that we're making sure that if the financial statements don't satisfy...
Well, if the financial statements don't satisfy, then asking another participant or another respondent of their offer based on something that can't be substantiated from someone else really is not ethereal or realistic.
It wasn't substantiated.
That's the thing. It can't be. Because, I mean, the information, as I read through it, the information was lacking.
So, I got a question really quick. Because we asked, we were told that we could, there would be a dialogue over those two months and not one person reached out. If there was any questions, we would have been more in the forthcoming. If that could be got this Friday night.
I appreciate that. But the problem is, or the problem as I saw it, is that the information was sent out to everybody. Here's the list of everything that was, that was needed. We received all the RFPs and then a majority of them, not everything was...
Probably months or years did you ask for, for association dues? I'm just curious, because if you set a standard, I think we should all know what that standard is and what objective evidence everyone else dues, because clearly...
No, 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 no. We weren't asking, I mean, association dues is just one part of it. You know, because you're going to be a part of the association. There's going to be dues that are associated with that. You need to be able to meet those requirements. Once we're out of it, you know, that's really based on the board's decision at that time. My point is, is that when we're sent out, we send out the list of requirements to, you know, establish the RFP. Everybody sends all their information in. If you've got some that are complete and some that aren't, I don't know that it's really fair to, you know, allow further time consideration or accommodation to those who didn't give everything that was necessary.
We were told that there would be a back-and-forth dialogue if there was questions. So, if there was any questions, any doubt...
I'm sorry. I don't remember your name. Jen? I really respect where you're coming from, and I appreciate you. We're going to have a discussion up here amongst the board. And then, you know, we'll see what comes of that. I'm sorry.
So, for me also then, the, one of the main criteria that I viewed for this whole process was that we, this RFP and the sale of this property gets the village out of it completely. So, for me personally, any respondent that came wanting just a portion or a piece of it still left us in as a, as a tenant of that property, which we do not want. The village doesn't have any use, doesn't have any need for that property, and we want out of it. And so, to come to us and say, well, we'd like a piece of what you own, doesn't really do anything for us because we're still part of it.
Their offer is for everything that...
No, I realize, but not everybody's what. Some want just a couple of rooms. Some people want just one portion of it. And so, so that, for me, was, you know, a big criteria. As well as then to what the uses were being proposed. You know, you weigh those out and see which ones that you feel would most benefit the village now and in the long term. And I believe, for me, the one that was awarded was really the one that stood out.
So, how do you explain to your residents that you're just going to walk away from 60 grand and you're going to push out a tenant?
Well, no, no, it's not a tenant.
No, I think that's a fair question.
I can easily explain that. I can easily explain that probably without, not without the torches and pitchforks. But if I explain to the residents of this town exactly how much money Village of East Dundee has invested in that, $60,000 doesn't even come close to making a difference. You know? That's the problem. That we are so far underwater on that.
You are taking this down a completely wrong path. What has been invested has, what has been invested has already been invested.
Right.
What gained from the sale...
Right. Right. And that's what you're going to look at.
Is a loss.
Exactly. And the whole thing, if we could ask and receive $300,000 from a respondent, we are still going to be so far underwater on this that it isn't even going to make a point.
You're deflecting of that.
I'm not. So, what I'm saying is that $60,000 difference that you're speaking to...
Could we hear from Scott Kuntzey?
Yes, we can, as soon as I'm finished. That as soon as we... Okay. Scott?
Well, I was just going to say, you know, we're so far underwater on this building. Whoever we sell this to, we're going to be subsidizing this purchase for them. So, one thing we should consider is if we're going to subsidize, do we want? I mean, it's appealing to me personally to say we're going to subsidize a charity.
We're not subsidizing anything.
Rather than a person, somebody that's, you know, going about it for capital needs for themselves. And I mean, I don't mean that to disregard anybody that's in business for themselves. But, you know, I do think that there's value in what happens in this building. And, you know, I think there is value, you know, in the sense that the foundation has been there. And like we've already stated, they've done work on the building. They clearly care about it and what, you know, and they care about the community. Those are all big pluses for me. I would agree with Kathleen that I would probably direct the staff to talk to them and make sure their finances are shored up. But, I mean, I would lean towards awarding to the highest bidder, who also happens to be a longtime resident there, and, you know, and highest bid. Buy more than twice.
Yeah, I would weigh in saying that our main objective is to get rid of this property, to recoup some funds for the community. Going with the highest bidder makes sense. Just putting in a stipulation that they do need to have the funds. If they don't within a week or whatever, the contract stipulates that it goes to the next bidder. And we don't try to negotiate the second bidder up to a different price. We just, if they can meet that amount and pay it, then it's fine. I think the RFP is a process just to try to get everyone's highest offer. And now we have them. And so, we should go with the highest because it brings the most money back to the public. And it's the public's money that would go to public causes. So, it seems like a pretty easy decision that we can...
I'm so sorry. Isn't that the whole purpose of the RFPs? Is it that we're going to make a chance? We're going to go out and probably... And I'm sorry to interrupt.
I can't hear you, Andy.
I'm saying that the whole purpose of the RFPs are at least to level the plate, really, right? And make sure that everybody has a fair opportunity to chance. We're all providing over the question. You should be going off of that.
Exactly. That was my point.
Yeah, and I agree with you. And also, if we're going to make concessions for people, then I can actually say, oh, well, I have concessions I can make for myself also that I can present. So, do we all get to present that or no?
Absolutely, I agree with that, makes sense. I mean, if we're going to go ahead to one party and say, "Oh, well, you need to re, you know, either shore up what you've offered us as far as information," then we should allow that for everybody, you know. So, I mean, it just, it only makes sense. I mean, what are we going to do? We need, that's what the point of the RFP is. Send us the information. Show us that you've got proof of funds, make the offer, and then, you know, everything else that was asked as far as the criteria to set up the RFP. If you don't have it, if you don't do that, then you're going to be discounted, you're going to be discarded. It is what it is.
I think this went down, this went down like, maybe incorrectly in the beginning. The village, we want out of the building, so maybe the RFP should have been your bid for buying the village out of their part on it. Because now we've got a little piece here and someone that wants a piece of this, so maybe it wasn't actually fair because you want only parts of it, when in the end, I don't want us to own part of it at all. I don't think we should, I don't think it's responsible for us.
It's quite possible that we also still get what we want, right? Because some people want this, some people want that, we all get exactly what we want. But we can probably also get some of it. But at this point, I don't even know what you're talking, I don't even spoken to my person. I'm not even sure how many people have given proposals. Let me know, is that something that you can share with us that we can know?
It's in the back end that you can get on the website.
Yeah, but I think that's important to me too, is like that.
So, if I, I can just add something to help guide the discussion a bit. This was a request for proposals. It's not a bidding process. It's not a situation where everyone has to have exactly the same information. You tried to make it fair, but you also didn't, I think you intentionally didn't limit the kind of proposals you wanted because you weren't sure what you were going to get. And so, really, it is an open-ended discussion, as Erica pointed out. There are no rules about this head, we can only consider this, it's kind of an open process. I just want to, legal, from a legal perspective.
It's a hindsight twenty twenty thing now. Looking at it, it's like, okay, well, we can create this puzzle if you want this room and this room, but that's.
And I feel like if the puzzle had added up to a hole.
That would have been great.
That would have been a different conversation, but the puzzle didn't add up to a hole. So, now we're left with two proposals that are the whole. And, oh, quite a handful of proposals, with some overlap that don't create the whole. So, that's, that's where.
Way more interest than I thought.
Right?
Right?
Can I just say something? Sorry. So, I was involved with the proposal, made sure of the lowest score for the theater space. I just want to propose, you know, I know, yes, it's nice to like have a nice thing that might benefit the community through the foundation work, but it's also nice to think about financial income, which is being offered by our group, which is going to bring visitors, going to bring dollars, going to bring people to the community. I think we should really take that into consideration, and also, our offer as well, is proposing the best. Things are going to bring people in and bring dollars in, so, yes, I think that also should be taken into consideration as well. And we all put aside, we wanted the whole space, and just put that in there. But we're trying to be genuine about what we actually need and want. I don't know that, you know, everybody specified exactly what they were going to use the spaces for. Possibly they did, I can read every proposal, but, you know, we're just trying to be genuine about, like, we only need this space.
Well, that really was what we wanted to just offer up, that we had this amount of space available. Let us know if you're interested in purchasing any or all of it. It wasn't really, you know, up for us to decide, you know, in entirety, what the use was going to be, or, you know, how much you were going to end up purchasing. None of that really, I mean, that's all on the respondent. It, based on those RFPs that came in, we, as the village, have a certain set of goals, if you will, that we're going to sift through these RFPs and then, and pick the one we feel best suits what we're looking to accomplish. Not all of them will. I mean, it just stands to reason, if you've got one participant or one respondent asking for a couple of rooms, and then somebody else asking for all of it, and, you know, properties across the street as well, you know, obviously, the uses are going to be significantly different, so then we'd have to go ahead and take those into account. But, but I agree with you that the uses are significant, you know, or the future use and what that'll be. So, it's not so much the focus of, you know, whatever the price is here, you know, this one had, you know, sixty thousand, this one had a hundred and ten. You know, I don't, I think it's, my opic, if the board were to go ahead and focus only on dollar signs in that respect, simply because when you take into account the whole of this situation, the money doesn't really factor into it. It's not really significant. We're never, ever going to get, unless we find oil underneath that building, we are never going to get our money back out of it. There's not a chance, and, you know, there just isn't. So, yeah, it's a legitimate response to suggest that the village should look to try and maximize whatever we are getting out of it. But I think it's just as important, if not more so, to consider what the use of that property is going to become and the effect it will have on the village now, twenty years from now, thirty years from now. And that's really the important thing. So, and that's hard to do, because, you know, it takes a little bit of crystal ball. But it's, based on what the suggestions are, it's pretty easy to see in my, in my mind, which one will most benefit us. Rich, did you have any comments?
You know, not, not much that haven't already been said. I'd say that, you know, to the Fox River player's point, you know, I think everyone has something unique that can be offered from the building and inquire about those spaces. You know, it's, it's an interesting position to be in, to have to choose who's going to get it. But at the end of the day, I think whoever removes us from that building and gives us the best position to remove ourselves from that building is taking the cake there, so. But it does sound like we have a little bit more discussion to do about this, so.
I would agree with that, yeah. So, at this point, oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, I had one more thing. I did some looking into, because I don't think we have any bad options of everybody who's applying would be good for all these spaces. I'd called the fish food pantry to ask, do we need another pantry? Are there certain services that they're offering that are already just duplicated? And they said that the delivering food to people in their homes is something they don't offer and can't offer, and that they are a very valuable asset, and that they do this for people. So, I think we're choosing between businesses that can make money, bring money into the community, people who can bring food to people in need. I think they're both very valuable, and so there's not one that, I wouldn't say that bringing in money is definitely better than bringing somebody food who can't get out of their home. So, that's why, for me, it's, I don't see any as like the bad option. They're all good options, which is why the dollar value is the deciding factor, just to be objective.
Well, and it's an interesting perspective. What I would suggest though is, one thing at least, I think that you need to have to add or look at would be sustainability of the operations, you know. Yes, while delivering food through this foundation effort is significant and legitimate and helpful, you have to ask yourself, how long is that going to go? Is that going to be in, you know, in foreseeable future? Or is it going to be something that, you know, will probably or could be eliminated due to costs?
Could be the same for.
I can't guess for any of the applicants.
Yes, I mean, but that's. Right, so you need to, you need to look into those.
I want to clarify, I'm with the advocacy party, I'm with the foundation, and I just wanted to clarify. The investors that are front of the money for the foundation have other, you know, they have commercial plans for the rest of it. So, you know, the speculation about what could be in the future is just that speculation. But, you know, these are people who are in business, they have, they have the money to check, will be with you within five days if you need it. And, and so, but they are looking at this as a business proposition as well.
Well, that would be something we'd want to know, Sue. Why wouldn't you have included that in the RFP?
It was, it was in the RFP.
Of what you're talking about doing?
All right, Sarah, do you have any?
Nothing that's, hasn't already been said.
Okay. Okay, well, we'll take all that into consideration too then. So, where does that leave us? Erica, Lance, with this process that we've run ahead and put out, we've got our responses.
Well, you're at the point where you need to start to see where the majority of the board members feel you want this contract to go.
Okay, so we need to.
Or whether there are further negotiations, but you need to, you need to shake out where everyone is on this. And it sounds like there are two main favorites, and so you, maybe the simple way is to figure out where everyone is on those two.
Can I ask, Sue, can I ask you a question? Is there a consideration for those that were also interested in parts of the building to talk with them about their space?
Oh, absolutely. We, you know, as I said, the investors that are doing this are business people, and they are very interested in talking about any other document or, or any other regions. And those, you know, that certainly would be something that could happen. The food pantry, I do not believe plans on, you know, occupying as a food pantry the entire space. That, as I said, that the people who are front of the money, the public angel investors, and they are part of this business people. They know what they're doing, they've got a good idea.
Do you have those questions, or is there a specific question? Just like, just like the rest of us did, all of this is additional information added back, and it's not.
Well, it's not, that's not exactly true. There was a document in the, in the RFP that did show that they had the funds available.
It wasn't.
They don't have.
There was, you didn't read the document.
Yes, I read the RFP, Scott.
It did say.
The RFP that comes down.
They say how much it is, but they didn't sort of make all the documentation that was supposed to say that.
Yeah, so.
I'm saying it, there's a little bit of consideration to let them do all of that. I think there's that sort of consideration for myself also, because as a current owner of the building, the association of the abilities using part of the common space that I should be using for other things. If anything, I can say, please consider that as a fact, that I've been there four or five years, and I don't have access to all of the common areas to accommodate the building for eight eleven. That could be something that I can also present, but we're not asking for that, no one is giving a chance for that. So, I don't think anyone should get any special treatment or favors. We never complain, we all submitted what we're supposed to submit. We shouldn't have any extra people from the past life, you know, saying, "Okay, well, we have people that are going to write for checking time today." I don't think that's fair.
Well, right, I mean, I don't, I understand what you're saying. I just, what I think, we're going to have to do is, as a group, we're going to have to sit down, I think, and have further discussion about this. I don't know, is this something that necessarily be, probably exactly the suggestion?
I think we had the majority of the board saying that we would like you to move forward with negotiations with the foundation.
Contingent on.
Contingent on them providing the funds.
Existing.
Cliff, you put in an RFP, and everybody else who submitted an RFP has had an opportunity to present to this board. Would you like to say anything? I mean, I hate to put you on the spot, you don't have to.
I'm happy to answer any questions anybody has. I thought our proposal was very fair. I think we accommodated in writing in the proposal that we would take into consideration three of their applicants that were within the proposal. I think we showed the financial wear recall, not only for the purchase, but also for the renovations. I think that y'all are really underestimating the renovations that need to be done there. The best of my knowledge in speaking with both Jennifer and Erica, there's no reserve for that driveway that's going to need to be replaced, and the price tag on that is huge. There's no, I mean, I know that there's a newer roof on there, it's still leaking quotes. There's no HBA system that, you know, ventilates the entire place, much less heats it and cools it. There's suspect on what the electric is. We have a bathroom on the first floor that, I mean, I'm hearing quotes of twenty, twenty-five thousand dollars to just flush toilets and be able to wash our hands. And so, I mean, as a board member that you're sitting in, I understand the needs to solicit the most money that you can to kind of cut short what your losses are. On the other hand, I think you kind of need to anticipate what it is that you want the building for. If you truly want it to be a food pantry, and Sue and the entire group does a great job there. So, I mean, if that's, if that's what you want in the building, then you should go in that direction. On the other hand, if you're looking, I am looking, not at a food pantry, I'm looking at a professional building, counseling center, insurance offices, financial suites, stuff like that. Those are two radically different things, and it's not us versus them, it's what's best served by you guys in the community. You know, what are you interested in? And we're happy to help any way we can. If we don't get the bid, we're, I mean, we're always friendly, we're happy to help. If we do get the bid, yay. The thing that I might, the only comment I might suggest to you is, some of us have already reached out to potential tenants. And if this is going to go on for another sixty, ninety days, we will probably lose those tenants. They will just need to go someplace else. So, the only thing I would ask of you is, what are we all going to do? Just be fair about it, make it swift. Don't protract this out, and then go either way. That's all I have.
I have one suggestion. So, you know, I think if the board was interested in, you know, a ten-day extension, give everybody an opportunity to submit any additional information, then we could, you know, look at that in ten days and come back and see what we get. And that would sort of level the playing field for everybody. Otherwise, if that doesn't seem like a reasonable way to move forward, then, you know, I get the sense the direction is to just negotiate with the highest bidder, and then if that doesn't work out, go to the next highest bidder. So, you just tell me what, what you think.
Yeah, I think a ten-day extension, Adam, for me, it's okay. There, we've heard from others that have, who've suggested that, you know, their approach may have been different, based on what they've heard tonight, so I don't think ten days is outrageous.
Ten days, so it would be on the agenda for mid-August then?
What's our first?
We are still talking about August dates, but.
We can have a committee of the whole.
We could have a committee of the whole. I would just say, let's say, next week, Wednesday, the twenty-seventh, five P.M., end of the day, everything is in.
All right.
And we'll go from there.
Oh, that's submitted, and that one we're meeting.
Right.
I mean, we just went through a whole thing where we said we shouldn't.
No.
Do a second, now we're going to, but, I know it's fine, which is weird, because some people don't like the direction that we went, that they want, you know, for further.
I'm thinking about the future, Scott.
Oh, believe me, I'm very much thinking about the future.
Okay, let me just, so, there's, there's six votes that are going to decide. So, maybe somebody could make a motion for one or the other, we'll see how many hands raised, and we'll just make a decision. Either we negotiate with the township, or we, or the foundation, or we open it up for ten days, let everybody have a chance to put more information in. That would be my suggestion. Scott, you want to make a motion? First one?
Well, do we, do we do this with a motion, Lance?
You certainly can't. It would start if you're one of those that would rather not extend the RFP responses for amended proposals or however you want to look at it for ten days, but you would like staff to negotiate with the foundation. The motion would be to direct staff to negotiate with the foundation to complete items of sale so that a contract could be drafted within the parameters of the response to the RFP.
Or if you.
Or if you want the other side to would be to hold the, allow the RFP to remain open for ten days until five P.M. next Wednesday. Those seem to be the two main candidates.
Well, I would say, you know, the village's goal was to get out of this building. I hear that the foundation is willing to talk to you guys about what you guys want from the building, working with you. So, I don't, I don't have a problem with going ahead and saying, removing, that we negotiated with the foundation for the RFP that was provided for the sale of it.
I'll second. Trusty Mahoney?
Yes.
Trusty Kuncy?
Yes.
Trusty Britton?
Yes.
Trusty Saviano? Trusty Tribber?
No.
Trusty Sodder?
Yes.
Sorry, Cliff.
Was that, was that your preferred?
Yeah, it was. I think it was a far better deal, Scott. You're not thinking down the road, and that's not unusual. It's just the way it is.
But they just lost this too, so why?
Yeah, why aren't you apologizing?
I apologize to you too, because, no, this deal is different.
So, you guys wanted to, you're going to negotiate with the foundation, and that helps, and then it goes to the next highest bidder, right?
Well, the difference between, I'm sorry, Andy, but the difference between your situation and Cliff's was that you just want a piece of it. There was another respondent that just wanted a piece of it. Our goal, one of the main criteria for us was to get out of six eleven altogether. There were only two that proposed taking it all, all off our hands. Foundation was one of them, and Cliff was the other one. And so, I'm just, you know, so I apologize to you for, as well. And so, um, I'm just, you know, so I, I apologize to you for that as well.
I only, I mean, you know, you have to do what you have to do. But my only thing is that, um, the met building has suffered through it, you know? And, um, what happened before would mean nothing like a majority owner where a majority owner came and started taking pieces of the common areas and saying, well, because the majority owner has the same situation with the finance department again, whereby I don't really have a say and my business suffers while I'm in there because I just don't have that clout to be able to say, okay, I have this much percentage. Things that, you know, they're taking things from me while I'm there.
Well, that, that's just, that's a matter.
And now it's not going with the situation. Now I was going to be an independent person I'm working with. And again, I'm, I'm, I'm going to be at a loss.
Yeah, well, and that hasn't, that doesn't change whether the village is the majority owner or whether somebody else is.
But it should.
We're talking about logistics here.
Trying to get out of it so that it wouldn't, so that it would change, so that I won't keep some ways because my business doesn't suffer. I pay property taxes, you know?
Right.
I have people from the community. I don't want to keep suffering over there. And I want to have a chance to be able to expand. I can't expand if I don't have an opportunity to do so. As a first tenant in there, you know, and I've been through that. Uh, so many offices that I've stayed there, we've been through COVID as well, so I'm in there. So I'm just saying that it's, I thought it would be fair, you know? But if you have to do what you have to do, why extend it? I just have to comply.
Again, they are saying that they are willing to talk to you about, you know, giving you, giving you space. Yeah, I, I would.
And common areas should be common areas to everybody that's in the assoc, that's every, to everybody that's in the association and everything.
So.
So I'm sorry about the past, but.
Just if I can, one second. I am out of town starting, anybody who knows my family, we have three kids. Our twenty-nine-year-old, our first one is finally engaged. So we're going wedding venue shopping all weekend. I won't be back until Monday, Tuesday, but if you need anything whatsoever, I'm just not here. Okay, thank you.
All right, so, uh, item F, we have this, uh, discussion on direction needed for repairs.
Go ahead. You want to run the meeting?
Well, this is what we do.
Okay, go ahead. Item F, um. Open it up.
Okay, so we want to talk about the caboose, directions on repairs needed in the caboose.
There we go. Erica, could you run the smooth one?
Do, yeah, something you want to say?
Uh, is that it good enough?
Um, you know, I, most of the information regarding this item is in the packet. It's, it's come to our attention that there's some pretty significant repairs needed to the caboose. You know, I, I would like for the village to be a good landlord in this situation and, and make sure that we take care of things and tidy them up if they are presented. And these were presented and they're, you know, fairly serious. So I'd like some direction from the board on how to proceed as to, uh, how to either make these unplanned repairs that weren't budgeted or, you know, go another direction. So interested to hear your thoughts on this one too. Some meaty agenda items this evening.
Okay, can I, can I ask just to make it public, dollar amount of the repairs that we're talking about?
Uh, I believe it's twenty-eight thousand five hundred.
Say again?
Twenty-eight thousand five hundred.
Twenty-eight thousand five hundred just for repairs. Okay, so.
Right, because for the last couple of years, as the leaks have been happening, we haven't made any. So now.
What is the budgeted repairs year to year? Like, is there a budget that we have for yearly repairs to do this?
I haven't seen anything in the budget that has been, you know, formalized in terms of repairs. It's just been as needed. And, um, you know, this is probably something we should budget for annually if we're going to have a, a long-term lease on this. So.
Yeah, I, I mean, I agree with you. I think just as we have take, we take and we budget for repairs for the depot, I don't think this should be any different. Um, and we, we can identify the issues, um, on that. So I'm sorry I cut you off.
Well, no worries. I would just say recommend we'll start doing that for next budget year.
Um, the other thing, I, Andy, I really appreciated the spreadsheet that you put together to see and to evaluate. I don't know if you want to talk to that anymore and share with the rest of the group?
Yeah, I just took the, the numbers in the packet and put it in a spreadsheet just to visualize and make charts of it. But it looked like there was a big initial investment to pour the concrete and get a crane and renovate this, uh, years ago. And that was the majority of the investment that, uh, was before our current tenant and before most of us. Um, but over the last, uh, the average over the last five years, the cost of that caboose, if you include these costs that we're talking about today, uh, is an average of about seven thousand a year in costs, where the average, uh, that the caboose has brought in is eight thousand a year, including the four years the Duke has been there. The first two being, the two years he started were very low and the COVID year and the year after were, um, thirteen and fourteen thousand. Um, so it's trending up and then the repairs, um, the concern was it looked like there were no repairs over the last three years since COVID. Um, and the damages sound like water damage, that there was something leaking and it wasn't repaired. So it seems like, uh, neglect to fix something that became more expensive. That's why it seemed like a budget for taking care of these things every year would probably solve this issue and not turn into a, in three years, do three years' worth of repairs.
Yeah. And the only thing I would add to that is I did get some updated numbers from Phil today for twenty-twenty-one expenses. And then what we've spent like year-to-date in twenty-twenty-two, um, it's nominal. I think it was, you know, fifteen hundred dollars, somewhere in that line. Um, but what's not included in that spreadsheet for expenses is the staff time of public works employees who, you know, do the repairs on their own, winterize it in the winter and fall. Um, so those are pretty substantial. And that's just something to note if we're going to continue to be long-term landlords of this property. Um, again, we should, um, budget for those, for that staff time and then account for it properly in a line item associated with the caboose.
So the current lease goes till twenty-twenty-five and, uh, you know, I like your chart. It makes sense. This actually makes sense to me, pages of numbers. Like, I start blinking it out for a while.
I need the bars, yeah.
But, um, I do have an issue continuing to be a long-term landlord for anybody. So lease until twenty-twenty-five, cool. Cool, this is what we've got. You know, maybe we can look at some ways we can work together a little bit more. You're trending up, you know, this is, we've got a great sense of community around the caboose. But, you know, if you're trending up, you want a restaurant, right? You want space. You want a real place and, or maybe we can do something with the caboose. I just, having the village be a landlord makes me very nervous. It's what we just got done dealing with. Like, I don't want to be a landlord. I don't want to participate in that. So.
Couldn't agree more.
That's, that's where it's like, yes, we have a current lease. Let's keep this going, you know? Let's do what we need to do because we haven't, you know, we, there's some repairs that need to get made. We want to be a good landlord. Well, we are a landlord. Um, but I don't, I don't want to do that in the future, like to not be a landlord in the future.
Should we sell the depot too? Just to be?
Just for fun?
No, just to be a devil's advocate, because I almost feel like.
The problem, the only problem with selling the depot, and I like the idea, is that the land that it's on is A, not our land. And B, I mean, we'd have to somehow subdivide that land or maybe have a land lease underneath the building, you know, on our structure.
And, and for me, I have to say, they aren't quite apples and oranges, but maybe they're Fuji apples and a different kind of apple. Because the depot is public service building, right? Yeah, yeah, they have Coke and things like that in there. But it's, it's a public service building in kind of our central park. The caboose is a business, right? It's a business. So that to me is, that's different. That's a different thing for me. And it's not, again, you know, I love you guys. I want you here. I want you in this town. I actually want you at the caboose for the next few years, but you're growing, you know, and you're kind of outgrowing that space too. So maybe at the end of this lease, we look at not being landlords anymore.
Is there any way we could put you in a brick and mortar operation before the end of that lease? Because we'd be willing to work with you in any way we could. But I got to tell you, we don't subsidize any other businesses to the level that we do yours from a percentage wise or dollar amount.
Well, that's, I mean, hold on.
No, I'm just saying.
We just, we just went, we don't subsidize Duke at all. In fact, we make money from what he's doing.
Year-over-year.
Obviously, again, you didn't read the packet or you didn't read any of his email.
We just talked about putting twenty-eight thousand dollars worth of the public's money into the repair of a structure. That, how many times have we done that for any other restaurants down here?
Well, if we owned any, I mean, we would.
We don't.
Well, right. And to Sarah's point, we're not restaurateurs, man. We shouldn't be doing this.
Yeah, yeah.
That's not the point that's saying we're subsidizing Duke. That is a very disrespectful comment.
No. We're subsidizing the caboose and the operation.
Their integrity is worth something. So that comment, I, that you lost.
And let's not put words in my mouth either. I don't appreciate that. I, I like being, like, for right now, we are at a limited lease.
Why, what could we do to get you in a brick and mortar operation? That's the only question I ask.
I think that one thing to keep in mind is whenever, when this caboose was purchased and none of us on this board, I think we're involved in that process except for.
Except me. I was there. I remember.
But I think that the purpose, when we bought it, was not to make money for the village. It was something else.
It was an attraction.
And it was probably attraction. And I think it's undeniable that it's very much serving that purpose. And that Duke brings in people from out of town for his festival, not just his food, but also his festival. I mean, it's clearly achieving the goals that was set forth for that caboose. Now, if we want to revisit those goals, I'm willing to have that discussion. But we have the agreement till twenty-twenty-five. I think we honor that agreement and we be a good landlord and, and fix our structure that we.
And as well, we can, we, we can decide to do that and I'm all, I'm okay with that. The only question I'm asking is if the growth of your business, apart from the caboose, is such that you're maybe outgrowing your current facility.
He hasn't said that. That was said to Sarah.
I'm just, I'm just building on it.
I would say, say like, outgrowing the booth, like our next goal, because we've been working on for like, guys like Anna for almost two years and buying another building in different towns and stuff. They want, they want public rent to come in, need to bring to our, to certain towns and stuff like that. So we've always had that negotiation actually. We have, we didn't sleep with another village too, because I believe in expanding it. Obviously, I want Dunn to be the home team, you know, because that's how it started. It started from a large and things like that. Um, so I think once we start pulling traffic out of the places, you know, then we can kind of get on that. Not on a level like a patillo's, but, uh, I, I kind of have a vision to at least see like three or four of them kind of work, you know? And I think the booth, I think it's a great staple. Uh, when we weren't in it prior, it wasn't as much traffic. Because we would get a lot of traffic at the market, at the, at the Saturday market and the Sunday market. And that's how it started. Um, because I started doing it in Chicago and then that came conflict with who, with, I forget the gentleman's name, but who had the depot dogs because we said that we were taking his business or whatever. But I think once we moved over there, I was, uh, as I said, everybody came to test it. We kind of watched it all kind of bloom and kind of blow up or whatever, you know? As far as like the, um, issue with it could lose, I've been saying for like years, I mean, not like telling everybody against the bus or whatever because it's not that situation. I understand that y'all need short staff and stuff like that. You got different fronts and things you have to play around with. But like, I do surely believe that like, if this, some of these things that were addressed years ago, it wouldn't be so big now. It's like, when I, when I was first starting to get them, like, so when his uncle last break out, he came and expected it. He sent his company gathering. He paid for the long time. Like, I, I spent a lot of money getting people out. Just like, I'm just checking them. People to see what can be done and what not to become. So that's, I don't have trouble with it. I don't say, hey, okay, I'll check this out. But they've always said the same thing or whatever. If the issues were addressed earlier on, we wouldn't go into the issues we have now. It's like, there's more than that. This is to an electrical panel that's right above the door to exit the booth. And even the fire chief, you know, as like, or the fire marshal, whatever he is, or who, who comes out and expects like the, uh, the fire hazard or whatever, that's it. That's an issue. He said if you guys get like an electrical, because it's a, it's a nut and shell. You know, and he said, there's a, a relationship in between. You kind of bounce off. I, I don't know how to merge, but he said that could be a safety issue, you know? You don't want to hear that if you have employees and everything that's thrown against that.
Yeah.
And we have tried things actually for repairs.
Yeah, so.
The best, you try, you do a lot of that work, you know, for breakfast.
Yeah.
You can offer, you do a food stall.
Well, uh, in that vein, we got quotes from one person. If you guys know somebody that would like to quote this work that needs to be done and maybe we can get a better price, that'd be amazing.
Yeah, but that's what I always do though, like unfortunately, I always retracting that or that like, uh.
Yeah, we're not, I'm not trying to say make a sweet our deal. I'm saying, well, we'll, you know, pay it. But I'm saying, you know, we, we can only find one person that would even bid it, you know?
Oh, for sure, for sure. And like the same thing too. Like I said, I know y'all short staff and stuff, like even when like y'all had, you know, person running around town talking about the weeds and stuff, like our person got out there and divorced, you know, she cheated my witness because she asked me to walk that down and I accidentally poured her weed too, you know, like, I don't come into play about that. I just look at the way it kind of tracks the job and gets it done, you know?
And I would say moving onto more of a brick and mortar, we would love for that stuff. Our goal, we started from, from the bottom and we're moving up. And, um, and so we'd love to make that, like, we've always, you know, really talked about that. We love being here. We're both grownups and we have. Um, and of course, I can understand there's like aluminum spaces and whatnot too. And, and so that's, I think we're all, like, you know, now it's mostly love and hope.
Right. Maybe three years, if we've got three years.
Yeah.
Maybe in three years.
Play with three.
We are trying to get more storefronts in the downtown, so we'll see what we can come up with.
And I just want to give y'all kudos to, uh, he shot out from like the city of Chicago and a lot of different cultural organizations. I said that they've never heard of Dunn D, but he's said that Dunn D threw the best moves possible this year.
All right. Thanks. Good job.
Thank you.
That's fantastic.
Okay, so, direction then. Anybody else have anything? Sorry. Rich, anything?
Nope.
No?
I just need, uh, to know, we're going to proceed with the highest, we're going to proceed with the existing bid unless we find something less. Uh, but for now, proceed with the twenty-eight thousand five hundred from the contingency fund.
Yeah, and actually that can, once we close a deal on six eleven, there's some extra income for you.
I think whoever can make it happen quickest, because there's some serious safety and health issues.
Yeah, well, coordinate, because I don't want to disrupt the operations and.
But the quote didn't include the pavers. So my question on that is, is that something we can do?
Phil addressed those to the best of his staff's ability. So they're stable for now. So we'll just keep an eye on it. And if we need to do anything further down the road, which it sounds like we may have to, then we'll come back to the board.
Okay.
The, um, also, you guys are talking about the leaking from the roof, but there, in your proposal, there weren't any roof repairs, like a line item. So is it just that the water is going in, from the roof repairs into the windows? Is that where it's mainly leaking in?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Yeah?
So like the, the door where you enter to kind of come in, there's an electrical panel right there.
Yeah.
The main door from stairs, yeah. So like, Greg checked it out, Phil checked it out with the, with the rains. Kind of like, to like water just pours from that corner and there's an electrical panel, like, I can pour it right into like the electrical panel. I mean, doesn't it pop in there?
Yeah. Smart. I just want to make sure that that twenty-eight five is, or whatever the amount was, covers that particular issue.
It does.
It does? Okay, I misread it.
What we're talking is ceiling above doors with existing metal structure, uh, coffee, so such that it'll address any leaks, any roof leaks inside.
Okay, okay, okay. Thanks.
Can I ask you, Duke, when you first noticed the leaking?
About three years ago.
Three years ago?
Yeah. This is the first time I've talked about it. I've talked about it for a while.
So, Erica, is that proper?
Go.
We'll, we'll get answers then.
All right. Then the next item would be G, if I could have a motion.
I will move to advise and consent to the village president's appointment of Cameron Bruner as the chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
I'll second.
Okay, I went ahead and sent out, based on some conversation that I had with Charlie Meyer, uh, an email to the board indicating that I asked Charlie to step aside. Attendance was becoming an issue and, um, it, it so happened that he, at that time, recently found out that he was going to be allowed to, um, his employer needed to allow for time for public service if he was already in that role. Um, but still felt that, um, it would probably be the best thing for the commission and the operation of it to just go ahead and have him step aside, be just a commissioner. And then I asked Cam if he would go ahead and.
Uh, but still felt that, um, it would probably be the best thing for the commission, uh, and the operation of it, to just go ahead and have, um, him step aside, be just a commissioner, and then I asked Cam if he would go ahead and step in as chair, and, uh, he agreed, I appreciate that. He, um, has shown himself to, he prepared, uh, obviously, he does the homework, and, uh, is interested.
Yeah.
That's a big, uh, that's a big part of it, because, but it, it's run in the meeting, and he's got a handle on that, and so, I think we're in good hands with, uh, with that choice, so.
Having seen some of the meetings, I agree completely with your recommendation.
Yeah.
Trying to take, trying to douse the torch.
Yeah, no, 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 I, I agree. I, I've been to a number of them too, and, and, uh, yeah, it was just, uh, a bit awkward, I just, uh, you know, the, the progression of the meeting, uh, you know? Uh, understanding of procedure, format, uh, you know, the, the whole Robert's Rules, you know, operation of a meeting and the, the structure of it, so, uh, I think we'll, we'll be in better footing with Cam there, so, that's all I've got. Does anybody have any questions?
We do have to do a proper vote on this, right?
Yeah.
Um, yeah, and, and there's nothing new that would need to be, uh, done to, if the board does approve, to, uh, accommodate this move, it's just, we say yay, and that's it? So, is anybody, Sarah, Kathleen, anybody have anything? No?
I'm abstaining. I'm over here abstaining, so.
Trusty Mahoney?
Yes.
Trusty Coonsey?
Yes.
Trusty Britton?
Abstain.
Trusty Saviano?
Yes.
Trusty Tribber?
Yes.
Oh! He's not even here. Somebody is sassy.
And Trusty Sotter?
Yes.
Great, great.
A little bit fun.
Thank you for the abstain vote, Sarah didn't even put that together, actually. Okay, so then we've got item H, and that is much the same, we could have a motion for this.
We'll make a motion to advise and consent to the village president's appointment of Ryan Buma to the board of police commissioners for a term expiring July eighteenth, twenty twenty-five.
We have three members on this board, two of which-
We need a second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Second.
I'm, I apologize, jumping ahead. Yeah, we've got, we've got two members of this board, the, the terms, uh, have long expired, and, uh, so, um, this, just another-
So my only request on this, in the, in the packet, it says you're replacing John Tice, who was a retired Dundee officer.
Right.
Um, my understanding there of Ryan Buma is that he is not, has not been an officer?
No, he's not.
Okay. The other person on the police commission, I think it's, I can't remember his name.
Joe Pena?
No, not Joe Pena, he's also Craig Martin.
Craig Martin.
Craig Martin's term expired last year, and he has also not been an officer before.
Right.
So it would be my preference to not replace a retired officer on the police commission that's responsible for testing, and hiring, and promoting, and all of that, with someone who's never been an officer? It would be my preference to replace non-officer to non-officer.
Well, my, my goal is to replace Craig Martin as well. So if we go ahead and replace, uh, Craig Martin today, which we obviously cannot do based on, on the agenda, with, um, Ryan Buma, that's all well and good, but we're going to revisit this again in another couple months.
And that's fine, but then what I would, what I'll be asking at the time is the same thing I'm asking right now, which is, hopefully, it's a, a retired officer.
Or somebody that has experience.
To replace John Tice.
And that I have, that, that I've got coming, in fact, uh, and, and it's a good point, you really need, I think it, it makes perfect sense to have somebody who has experience in either law enforcement or fire protection to, to sit on the board that's going to dictate grievance, promotion, um, uh, discipline, things like that. However, with both officers, or Joe Pena and John Tice, they're both former East Dundee police officers, and so, the fact that they have experience and, you know, time served in this building, and now are going to be asked to, uh, hold sway over anything with regard to discipline, promotion, and, and, uh, grievance, with people that they know, I think, is a conflict.
Oh, that's interesting, because I think it's valuable.
See, I don't, I don't think, and, and in fact, I, I've, uh, kind of polled an audience on that as well, and everybody that I've talked to, uh, and, and most of the ones I've talked to have been chief levels. Uh, in fact, it was one of the things that I, uh, asked, uh, in the, our interview process, when we, we got Chief Kruger, um, was their feelings on that, and everybody was unanimous that you should not have a former officer now serving on a board like that, who has-
I would be interested to hear from those people, directly, myself, or in front of the board, because, especially with this right now. I understand that in the future, you're planning on making a recommendation to bring in, you know, to, you know, replace, um, Craig with a retired officer, or however that goes. I am still not comfortable with this direct replacement, with a non-officer replacing an officer. If we, if we, in the very next meeting, decide to replace Craig Martin with Ryan Buma, I'm cool, totally cool. But, a non-officer replacing an officer, so that we have two non-officers on the commission, I'm not, I'm just not comfortable with that.
Is Mr. Buma here?
No.
No.
What, uh, what about, what is Mr. Buma's qualifications as to be on this board? That's my question.
What are his qualifications? His qualifications are that he's a local businessman, that he's a long-term resident, and that he is looking to help with the village, he's helped him out, sir. You know, the qualifications that would necessarily go into either the police and fire board are really no different than the qualifications that we look for a candidate for the planning and zoning, or any other commission for that matter. Um, we don't really have any certification that needs to be provided in order for someone to sit on the planning and zoning, that being experienced with building or anything like that, or construction, uh, that they can speak to.
But, you know, no, but that's true, but so, for instance, for the planning and zoning committee, there is, um, somebody who's an architect, who has an understanding, there's, you know, the people that are real estate, that's valid for planning and zoning, the same thing.
That's why I was with them.
Right, and, and, and I'm in agreement with you, but that, I, what I, the point that I'm making is that with the, um, police union, with everything else that has to go on, and the litigious, you know, potential litigious nature, um, and, uh, that, you know, we can face with the police union based on decisions that are made here, I think, I think some, I, I'm in agreement with everybody else that says, I, I want to have some, I, I don't want to have just, you know, Joe Schmo off the street that doesn't know anything about unions, contracts, uh, you know, collective bargaining, all that kind of stuff.
I, I get you, Kathleen, I understand, it's a perfectly valid and, and acceptable and understandable, uh, point. My only point to counter that is that we run into the problem that, I, I've been in East Dundee now forty-seven years, and there has been at times, in my time here in town, where East Dundee had a bit of a reputation for being one of those towns that operated under the guise of it's who you know and not what, and that's not good. And I don't, I, my point here is not so much to, um, eliminate somebody who has law enforcement experience with someone who doesn't, while that's a valid point, um, it's just as valid to say that I want to avoid any sort of incestuous type of relationship with this board and the current operation we have here. I think it's just a little too close. And so, since I don't have anybody else, I, I do, however, have someone who will be able to come, who has plenty of law enforcement experience, at the end of the year, probably by November, who I plan to, and he's already agreed, uh, to take over for the other expired member on this board. You know, it, it's really just semantics, if we're going to talk about replacing-
Right.
A, an officer who's, or somebody on this board who has law enforcement experience with someone who doesn't, all right, well, we can go ahead and eliminate the person with the non-experience, how did that person get on this board to begin with?
Rich had, Rich had a comment.
Yeah, Rich, are you there?
Hi, everybody. Chief, are you allowed to comment on this?
I can talk to the mechanics of what they do, but I prefer not that everyone's in what is an elected official, so you're not required.
You are such a smart-
You know what, I would, I would actually love to hear what this board, what are the duties on this board, if you know?
I mean, I read the blurb on our website, but that's-
Thank you, so the Police and Fire Commission Act in the state is meant to be a, a body of three individuals that are chosen by the village president, concurred with the village board, in order to take politics away from hiring, firing, uh, discipline, and selection, and, and, uh, promotion. Uh, so their processes in regards to that, they do nothing with negotiations, with unions, with grievances, and so forth. Uh, certainly, as has been mentioned, there could be potential, sometimes there's litigation in regards to the way a particular process may be handled or not, uh, but, uh, those are very far and few between. Uh, the one thing I would tell you too, and that did come up in our conversations several months ago, is that because East Dundee is a home rule community, you can deviate from the Police and Fire Commission Act when it comes to some of those things. And many communities that are home rule now have made, for instance, the hiring process an administrative hiring process, instead of going through the BFPC. So there are some things that you can deviate from, by statute, because we are home rule.
Interesting.
Good to know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, G. Any other comments?
I really support, uh, like, the civilian versus civilians, which, I mean, I would split that.
Okay, I get it, that makes sense, uh, I, I, I think you, too much emphasis is being placed on, on that, I, I don't understand, I mean, we have a, we have a person on this board right now who doesn't have any, uh, prior law enforcement or fire protection experience. How did they get on this board, would be my question.
I think it's always good to have at least one civilian, I think it's always good to have at least one person who's never been there, a different perspective, things like that, I think that that's great. But, again, I just, I think the majority should have experience, and have a different perspective.
Yeah, I, I agree, I, I understand it, and I guess the question then becomes, and it's not, I'm not trying to, you know, be difficult here, but we are a very small town, uh, there are residency requirements to be able to sit on this board, and the question then would become, what if you can't find anybody? Not me, not you, whatever, but what if a, a person, a resident with prior law enforcement experience can't be found, what do you do in that respect? So, I mean, not with an answer, it's more rhetorical, but it's something to consider. So, we'll go ahead and, and, uh, and vote on this one, if there are no other-
Do we want to vote, or do you want to?
Well, it's a motion, it's been taken.
Oh, it's a motion. amend the motion.
If anybody, if no one else has any other comments?
Can we, can we amend the motion?
You can withdraw the motion, and we can vote on it at another, at another time.
Okay.
We'll have to put this on the other meeting, which we'll do, if that's the case, depending on the vote. Kathleen?
I, I'd like to withdraw the motion, and we can entertain it at a, another time.
Do, you gonna just suggest a table?
Rich was the second.
For, for the managers.
If there's, if, if someone wants to treat it formally, we can, but if everyone kind of wants to revisit this a little later, with a small board like this, that's okay. Okay.
Thank you.
All right, so do, do we need just a consensus then, to, to table it?
Well, it sounds like everyone is okay with the advice and consent being withdrawn at this time, and it'll be brought, re-brought forth again, so that it's not actually voted down, correct? Because it seems like that's how it would go, that's appropriate.
And just to let everybody know, the individual that I've asked to sit on this particular commission does not have experience with the East Dundee Police Department, but the police department experienced at the time.
Yeah, but it has experience. Perfect.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Good enough.
Ready to amend my second, or leave it?
No, you, we're, we're good, because the primary motion has been withdrawn, and no one is demanding a vote on the original motion, or, you know, a vote whether to allow the withdrawal, there are all sorts of weird little things we could get into, that get kind of ridiculous in a small group. If everyone's okay with that, the idea is that it's not ripe for a vote at this time, uh, but the village president will bring, bring it back with the understanding of how the discussion went, and the, and the preferences of the board.
Good, good. Okay, that'll take us to item I, um, this one is, is this a motion, or is it, it just says approval, but-
Do we just need like, a thumbs up for this?
I don't know, Andy, do you?
Yeah, I'll give a quick overview, this is, um, we show three-
Could you just read it in, to the record?
Oh, yes.
Just making an approval.
I move for approval of the Arts Council recommendation for crosswalk art designs in the public right of way, and color selection for the depot chair.
A second. If we need to, a second.
So, yeah, a quick overview, uh, the crosswalk art, the Arts Council has met and proposed three different designs from three different local artists. Um, one was a compilation of two, uh, artists, and one each from two other board members, uh, created three different designs for three different crosswalks along the Fox River Trail. The, the thing that might change is the location, because we've determined after picking this artwork, that that kind of paint needs to cure for three days, and we don't want to shut down, uh, that very busy street of Barrington at Fox River Trail for three days. Um, so, we can still review the artwork, if it's approved as is, we could find it for other locations, uh, but there might be a modified, uh, around the depot, not in the street, location, if streets are deemed, um, not worth shutting down for three days. Um, so, first, reviewing the artwork, uh, do we approve of all three, if we find spots for them that fit, and then second would probably be, um, as advice to us, would you prefer to have it not on the street, so that we don't shut down any streets, like, right near Duke's, or, uh, Hill, or Jackson? One of those could possibly be shut down for a few days, because they're less busy side streets. But if the board says, let's not shut them down, then we can focus only on, uh, non-street areas.
I do have one question for you.
Yes.
In the packet, it's just like, basically, this is going to be a two-year, uh, design. What happens at the end of two years, to the, to the paint?
Uh, new artwork, because it's, uh, it'll start fading after a few years, uh, it'll still be there, but it'll start to wear out, uh, and then, that would be a good time to repaint it with new artwork, uh, so it's not a very faded. It maybe is three, like, we'll know after two years if that's accurate.
Yeah. Is there, uh, Phil, is there a, an immense, I mean, I'm just thinking of roller paint, I can only imagine that it's some crazy paint that costs a fortune. Is there going to be a cost savings painting the sidewalk, rather than the, uh, the crosswalk on the street? Or would you recommend the same paint anyways?
I did not investigate, pavement versus sidewalk, so it's hard to answer that question.
But we were looking at pavers around the depot.
Right.
Because there are a lot of pavers over there, like, next to the trail, near the street, but pavers up and down that area that they could target.
On the south side of Barrington.
Yes.
I, I would, I mean, I, I like the idea, I like the idea on Hill and on Jackson, um, the Barrington Avenue one, for the points you raised, Andy, are, are problematic, I guess.
Right.
The other thing I, I would suggest too, though, is that we really think about the idea of painting those pavers, the, the village of East Dundee spent tens of thousands of dollars putting in those bricks, and the idea of painting them, and if this is, I mean, brick is a very porous material, so, when you say this paint is going to fade, it's gonna, and between now, and it'll chip, it'll peel, it'll fade, and it's, between now and the time it gets repainted, you're never going to be able to get it off. So you, you gotta get right with the idea of living with it, or you're going to replace it. My thought is that the bricks, the way they are right now, tend to support a very, um, quaint aspect to our downtown. The idea of the sidewalk art, or doing some crosswalk art, uh, is very novel, and it's, I think that's what it's meant to do. Um, but, we have to be careful about going overboard on it, and I think if we were to paint all that brick over on the depot grounds, we would definitely be overboard on that. The other thing I would suggest too, is that it doesn't necessarily have to be all in the downtown, I realize that with the amount of traffic that we get down there, foot traffic and so forth, you know, we have, um, a lot of people able to see that, but, um, keep in mind that the south of seventy-two is going to be redeveloped soon, and we're laying the groundwork for that, and so, with new possibilities of development that are going to be, that have been presented and are being sought, um, this would lend itself to that half of seventy-two as well, that half of the downtown. So, um, while I like the idea, I, I have to say, I would really, really caution and basically request that we rethink the idea of painting the brick.
Avoiding the bricks, yeah, there's a lot of intersections, we're open to any, there are many crossings along the bike trail, I think it's, uh, seen- I think it's seen as important to be on the bike trail so that there are tons of bikes going through, and there's no towns where you do ride over artwork. And there are towns that do it, so there's ones that don't have pavers that could be targeted where, especially the most blighted ones.
Sure. Has any questions or communication been with the county as to being able to actually paint the trail itself at different locations at the time? Have we thought about that?
We haven't. I think if it would, if it was within our section of the trail, which is near Hager up to Barrington, then I think we'd be fine. Otherwise, we'd have to get their permission to do it. But the section that we just repaired of the trail, it is tons of black marks of tar. It's not visually beautiful, like, that would be something that could be beautified by painting it.
Yeah, we looked at bike trail art too, so I may.
Yeah, we're open to.
I mean, as opposed to all crosswalk, we might be able to look at that. I don't think they would give us a hard time with it because we do maintain that in at least the downtown. I mean, it goes all the way from Duncan Avenue or even further south by the Public Works Garage, then all the way up to Water. Well, I guess not Water, it goes up to Illinois Street.
Yeah, we, there was some back and forth with them on repairing the bike trail. And they did measure out and found, like, right in the middle of Hager, there's a line where is responsible for the trail over here and there. So, I think that that line, we just avoid going past just to not have to deal with.
No, right, I get that. I'm just wondering, I mean, that's a pretty significant chunk of trail.
Yeah, there's a lot of stretch there.
To do that, you know, especially if there've been repairs and we've kind of camouflaged it with some artwork, that might be a good, you know, way to combat the.
It looks like on your pictures here, the one at Jackson Rivers, I don't know if it doesn't have bricks. That's where it's a crosswalk.
Yeah, for a crosswalk, that one would not have bricks.
No, can I ask, I don't mean to interrupt, when you were talking about traffic, can half of it be done, let it dry, direct traffic around it, and then reverse it to do the second half? Phil?
Phil pointed out that it would be problematic, but possible, but.
Drive over by the grass, you know, just do it two stages.
Yeah, I'd like to have some type of flag or staff in that, because you get to be able to approach essentially a one single lane.
At a pedestrian crossing.
I'm not talking about that, I'm talking about Jackson and Hill. You know, if we were to do that, I mean, considering that, especially Jackson, the traffic there isn't quite nearly as heavy.
It's possible, but we can get into, like, for example, evening activities downtown where you've got a lot of traffic, it could cause some confusion.
Yeah.
Particularly, you're talking about a bike path because of the pedestrians and cyclists. And you go through, it's a little confusing. It's probably not a desirable situation.
Yeah, there could be safety issues. There was a biker was hit at one of those side streets years ago. But there is confusion when people have to stop and then go forward a little more and stop. And if they have to go around into the other lane while there's bikes, we'd be okay with dropping the crosswalks and aiming towards the bike trail.
Yeah, just thinking about traffic.
Or the bike trail and also the crosswalk without.
Yeah. Yes. What Tricia said.
Yeah, closing it off completely, or.
But plus, the pedestrians are having, the pedestrians now, they kind of, cyclists can't cycle or walk across the crosswalks, so they're having to go outside the path. I mean, you've got cars coming, it could be.
Yeah, I mean, they'll still have to go outside the path if we do anything on the bike path, but at least it's not also an intersection with cars.
Yeah, it's a little bit with cars.
Yeah.
Yeah, the stretch by Hager, we could, I mean, bikers, half of them already go in the street there, and we could divert them for three days off the trail, or somewhere. But at an intersection, it's a little trickier to go around it without going off the curb and then up the next curb.
For cars.
For the bikers.
I'm thinking more of the cars. I was, the way they're originally drawn in the packet, I figured it was just, it was on road, so.
Yeah, we were targeting Barrington, Fox River Trail on the actual artwork.
Well, why not do it near the intersections? That we, like, not in the, like, not in the crosswalks, but kind of near where people have to stop?
There's, there were some rules, like, if we were going to paint it, it has to be within the white lines that are there, like, am I right for safety purposes? I don't think we could.
No, I'm sorry, I mean, on the bike trail.
Oh, I thought you meant on the trail.
No, like, no, I'm just going to go. No, I'm, like, if we're on the bike trail, if we, if we kind of want them to be near the intersection so that people can see them, because I think it's a cool thing, not, it is, it's a cool thing for the bike trail, but it's also a cool thing for the town, like, for people who are in the downtown area. So, if they're near some of the crosswalks, or near the depot, or things like that, so that they're still, you know, just thinking about it.
Erica, do you have any comments, like, what your thoughts are?
Solutions. Well, my only suggestion was because we're potentially going to do a mural at the Jackson Street location, that I would suggest not putting the art right next to there. So, it would be like two pieces of art right in a row. So, you know, I think it's reasonable, because we haven't done this before, to test it out and see how it works, and maybe with one as a test case, and then see how it wears. And then we can make adjustments and tweak if we find that the material doesn't hold up, or it does hold up. So, you know, if the Arts Council has one of those three designs that they're, like, ready to go with, I would say, let's give it a shot and try it.
Where?
Hill would probably be the best, but we have to consider work being done, you know, any development. I mean, we'd have to ask ourselves, and keep in mind, I guess, when we think any development would happen, either on Hill or on Railroad, or on Jackson.
I would suggest Railroad, where the bike path crosses. I think that is like a very low-impact area. There's not a lot of truck traffic. I see decent amount of truck traffic on Hill. But we could also do any other standard crosswalk in the community. I was thinking up by where Barrington Avenue meets 68, or whatever that is. It's like a cross from the park. Like, it doesn't get a lot of foot traffic, but it's also a pretty cool location for something unique. But, you know, there's lots of places we could try. But I would say, let's not get too bogged down in the details. Let's just try something and go forward, and then let's go back and reassess.
They might stand out.
Okay, how do we feel about the blue on the chair?
I dig it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye! Done.
Yeah, and the blue matches our signs for, it says events, and it's this blue, and we're pulling from the palette of brand colors.
And I like that all of the artwork for the crosswalk has blue in it, like, kind of all pulls it together. Like, I.
Yes.
And the events committee is going to try to do something around the chair unveiling once it's repainted and everything, so.
Looking at the tomato contest.
So, if all of these artworks are approved, we could meet and suggest a new spot for them.
Maybe we should have a conversation with Forest Reserve and see how, if they have an objection to us painting the bike trail on our portion of it. Is it Forest Reserve, or is it Department of Natural Resources? No, Kane County Forest Reserve is the.
Yeah.
Yeah, we talked to him originally about the repairs. I could ask him and make sure that he's.
It's his board committee or whatever.
Yeah.
So, right now, we just need your approval for the designs and the color of the chair. So, the location.
Color of the chair, I don't have any problem with that, just.
I like, I like all the designs. I have a slight preference towards the crazy fish one.
Me too.
But that's me. And it looks like the harder ones.
I would rank them CBA personally.
Yeah, I mean.
We can kind of do that.
That's good to know.
Just in the interest of time, if we're talking about, you know, proving the idea, we can. I think what we got more is another discussion on where and the extent, so.
Yeah, I can work with the Arts Council and Brandis to come up with the suggested location and come back as a final, and we'll go to that.
I could know, since that's an approval, I don't know if that's a voting issue or not. So, just move on then to item J. Thank you all, if I could have a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve an ordinance amending Section 151.006, fences to include a section to allow planning and zoning and historic commission jurisdiction to hold public hearings and make recommendations to the village board.
Second.
Apparently, this is more of a housekeeping thing. It never fell under the planning and zoning's purview to discuss fences. I, to be honest with you, I did not know that.
There's a whole pile of code cleanup we need to do at some point.
Yeah, there's some really strange, it was very strange the way you dealt with these issues before, but this would clean it up.
Yeah. And, you know, to be honest with you, there's a lot of areas of our ordinances that need attention, so. Does anybody have any questions or concerns on this one?
Cam and the.
I don't see anybody for the PNC, so.
No, we're fine.
Catherine?
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Coonsey?
Yes.
Trustee Britton?
Yes.
Trustee Saviano?
Yes.
Trustee Tribber?
Yes.
And Trustee Sartor?
Yes.
Wonderful. That'll take us to item K. This is an odd one. Does it?
Is this just housekeeping?
Yes.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve an ordinance adopting and establishing Section 31.03, Whistleblower and Anti-Retaliation Act and Policy of the Village of East Dundee, Municipal Code Officers and Employees Chapter.
Second.
Second.
So, cleanup to deal with new state law required.
State law. I do have a thought on this.
Please.
We, it says that the report, the person that the employees have to report to would be the village administrator. We just went through an issue with having a conflict of interest, I guess, reporting to the village administrator. So, I just wonder, I guess I wonder two things. Is there a different person we can select? You know, who would that rightly be? I don't know. Well.
We've already had one issue come up, and because by default, we don't have anybody, it's the state's attorney, so we work.
That seems onerous, though.
It's extremely onerous.
What were you going to say?
I was going to say, that's what's in the statutes, because we didn't have an ordinance as a state's attorney, and if it involved a village administrator, we got to have a state's attorney.
Right, and if there is a conflict, it would go to the state's attorney.
Yeah, but how does an employee know how to go to the state's attorney to file this? I don't.
They'd have to be, they would be given direction if they tried to make a complaint somewhere else, and the village administrator felt that, you know, couldn't take that complaint for whatever reason. Keep in mind that the problem that was there before was created. It shouldn't have been there to begin with, is kind of what I mean to say. It was, the problem wasn't with the village administrator being the basic person to report to, but because of a relationship that existed within the structure that was there that probably usually would not be there, one would hope.
Okay.
Is anybody else? And I could also add that this is typically how it's been done by municipalities.
Yeah, we are a very small town. And that presents some different things.
We just need to make sure staff knows that they can talk to the board, and we'll say, no, you get to go to the state's attorney. Yay!
Yeah, well, and that's true. I mean, just to minimize any liability or otherwise, so.
Any complaints against Eric.
Is this?
We're expecting a list.
Is this something that every municipality is going to have to adopt?
Yes. Yeah, there's a home rule preemption. There's no question you have to do it. And it's because of a perceived need to create a standard reporting for every.
Kind of like prevailing wage, you got to do it.
Catherine?
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Coonsey?
Yes.
Trustee Britton?
Yes.
Trustee Saviano?
Yes.
Trustee Tribber?
Yes.
And a Trustee Sartor.
Yes.
All right, good enough. That takes us to item L. If we can have, I haven't said that.
I'll make a motion to submit an application of planning and zoning and historic commission for text amendments to Section 157.2023 in the zoning ordinance and to add village administrator as an authorized applicant for text amendments.
Second.
Okay, are there any questions on this one?
So, we're saying that we're just going to allow Erica to petition the planning and zoning board to do what? Text amendments.
Right now, it's a two-step process that duplicates the village board's approval. So, if we want to have a text amendment, either something that you would suggest, or something that I would suggest, or Steph would suggest, we have to bring it to the board. You have to approve it by motion to even submit the application. And then it would go to planning and zoning, and then we'd come back to you to decide if you want to.
So, we're still going to be approved, but it's just taking out the part where we give them the permission to make the change.
Right, so now I would be able to submit the application on your behalf, or on Steph's behalf. And it would still come to you in the end for a little portion.
All right.
And also, if it was something significant, Erica would let you know about it anyway. I'm planning to do this, so, you know, so you'd still be able to, if you had a problem with it or thought you'd never approve it when it came back, could make that note.
It eliminates a slow.
But the idea is, you have, you formally see things twice when the formal action to even send it is largely the approval, and then it has to come back to you. So, this way, it only comes formally before you once.
Makes sense. All right. Anybody? No? Catherine?
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Coonsey?
Yes.
Trustee Britton?
Yes.
Trustee Saviano?
Yes.
Trustee Tribber?
Yes.
And Trustee Sartor?
Yes.
Good enough. Okay, item M, if we could have a motion. Another related PNC.
Move to submit an application to the Planning and Zoning and Historic Commission for Text Amendments to Section 157.003 and Section 157.050 F1F1 in the zoning ordinance.
Second.
All right. Questions, comments?
Which one is, is this the one with the? No, what is?
This is tattooing and permanent cosmetics.
Okay, I do have a question on this. I didn't understand the chart, what the P and what the S means.
So, if.
Permitted and special use.
Yes, if a business were to open in the B1, B2, or B3 business area and wanted to do.
Any of those things, they can do them without asking for special permission. But if they want to have a tattoo parlor, they have to come to make sure that we will allow it.
Right.
Okay. Very well.
And this is, again, just for us to submit the application to PCHC, which would then come back to the per final.
They are, this is not necessary then, under the provision we just passed normally. Like, we're, this is what we're doing.
Right, this is the last one.
Gotcha.
Well, you're still a legitimate, a legitimate place to, Erica could still bring one before you if she didn't know there was enough interest. It's just that she's authorized for basic matters that she feels comfortable getting the process going to get it.
And as a good professional city manager, I would never presume a board would approve something in advance and then not put this on the agenda.
Yeah.
That's a good point.
I had a suspicion it might be approved, but I don't presume.
All right. Anybody? No?
Nope.
Catherine?
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Coonsey?
Yes.
Trustee Britton?
Yes.
Trustee Saviano?
Yes.
Trustee Tribber?
Yes.
Trustee Sartor?
Yes.
Right, and the final point of the day. Item N, if I could have a motion.
I will move to submit an application to the Planning and Zoning and Historic Commission for Text Amendments to Section 157.086 in the zoning ordinance regarding special uses.
Okay.
Second.
And this is actually the proposed text amendment, isn't it, that you put in here?
So, I believe this one is regarding the sunsetting of special uses. So, they wouldn't transfer automatically with the property, and the village board would get to weigh in again on whether or not to continue them.
Right. There's no, there wouldn't be any built-in, say, 10 years or anything like that on these, where there is just upon the sale of the property, or end of the business, or just the sale of the property?
If they close the business, and I think it's closed for a certain period of time. Do you remember what it is?
Six, probably six months.
I think it's 180 days.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, do we want, do we want that? Is that what they're going to talk about? I guess we should have, okay, fine.
I mean, yeah, the PCHC will discuss whether or not that makes sense. We'll come back to you with recommendations if you like it. You can go with it, it's not recommended.
Great.
Any other questions? No? Catherine?
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Coonsey?
Yes.
Trustee Britton?
Yes.
Trustee Saviano?
Yes.
Trustee Tribber?
Yes.
Trustee Sartor?
Yes.
Okay, that takes us to financial warrants. A couple of them there. Okay, that takes us to financial warrants, a couple of them there, they're whoppers, but don't get thrown. Uh, most of that, one is the, uh, water tower, uh, we'll go with, uh, village reports. I'll start out, just by saying that we had a really good turnout for our wind down Wednesday, um, and, uh, modern Monday's happening right now, it looks packed out there, well, still there, but it was packed when I first came in, um, and, uh, so I appreciate the help, uh, that, uh, public works and everybody, uh, did, and especially then on the storm, too. We had a, a storm, a number of trees that came down, and, uh, those guys had, uh, take care of a few whoppers that, uh, that came down, so that was, uh, that was good, so, that's about all I have, Scott, what you got?
Uh, I had a question, um, earlier this year, we authorized the purchase of those planters out there, which are amazing, love them. We also talked about replacing the gravel behind the depot with pavers, and I believe we approved the funds for that, and yet there's still their gravel, so I'm just wondering which one.
No, it's, it's in work.
It's happy to see the light.
Yeah, where, where you been? Oh, take a look!
I drove the other way, I'm sorry. Thank you, I answered her question.
Pick it up.
It was actually, I'll give you that, it's already, so, uh, it's a much improved situation.
Awesome, good, great.
Uh, well, the other thing is that I did post, uh, the event on Facebook to get volunteers for the, uh, Clean the River Day on September seventeenth, um, so, and I know that they just talked about this, so I'll talk to you guys about that as well, but.
You're on, you're on my list.
Last year, you gave us garbage pickers, and garbage bags, and vests, and gloves, and I would love to have all those things again, if you don't mind. And we'll try and figure out how many people we're actually gonna have this year, or last year was a little bit more haphazardly planned, but.
We're gonna try to make it part of a, an event.
Yeah.
And really put it out there and get a bunch of people involved, and make it a day. You're on my list.
Katie just left, it's unfortunate, because we might be able to tap into some of the township folks. I, Erica and I took part in a cleanup of the Library Springs area there, and, uh, we collected a bunch, and, uh, they had same things, shirts and pickers and stuff like that for us, so maybe they'd be able to help out as well, so we put the word out there, and she might be able to get us more, more labor.
Very good.
So, good enough, that's all. Rich, what do you got?
No report.
Right, Trish.
I'm gonna say no report. A short report, I did a, a variance for a fence, just to, uh, one, it was a minor difference of like three feet to put a privacy fence up, and then I thought, I should see how the variation, or the variance process works, um, so, the takeaway is that it's, it feels, uh, as a resident, that the process takes a little long, not anybody's fault in the process, just the process that's set up is kinda like five steps to get a fence moved over this far, uh, and if it seems reasonable, like what I imagined as a resident was, uh, inspector will come out and say, that seems reasonable, maybe get signatures from your neighbors, and if they're fine, uh, that's good, but it's, uh, kind of a five step, like the, you reach out to inspector, he tells you how to fill out an application, there's letters to all your neighbors, and a very confusing sign, so your neighbors are like, what does that even mean?
I think you're starting to business.
They think that you're opening a hotel, or, yeah, they think I'm trying to rezone my house from what the sign says, so there's a lot of things that are confusing, and then like the actual building permit and inspection at the end, um, but I did drop it, 'cause, uh, because of our code being outdated, it was gonna have to reset and restart, and I was like, uh, I learned what I was trying to figure out, but, uh, it's, it seems like from the, from talking to neighbors, that they're, uh, they all were like, we don't care what you do, and you're, like, that seems fine, and everybody looked at it, thought it was fine, but it seems like there's a lot of red tape that I think makes a lot of sense in, like, rezoning a commercial development area, I'm sure all those steps are needed, but as we have planning and zoning and things being figured out, like maybe revisiting some of the minor things that could be, um, tackled very, uh, more concisely or quicker.
So the, a key thing to consider putting in place is, so first of all, variations may seem like it's fine, because your neighbors are fine, but that's not always the case.
The president.
And so, that, the system is designed to deal with when there is adversity, but the point is a good one, many communities, home, home rule ones, of course, which you are, uh, because you have complete control over the zoning processes, to create a category called, and you use the term minor, and that's what those code provisions create, called minor variations, and they jurisdictionally limit, like, percentage of disparity from what the code would require, setback or something, up to so many percent, and allow the administrator, either the zoning administrator or village, uh, manager, administrator, to approve minor variations if there are letters, that notice is given to the immediate neighbors, and there, there's no objection, so that could deal with that, but you, you could consider that in the future.
Cool. Yeah, and I'm not trying to push the fence, I'm proceeding with the fence as like.
Right, I understand, well, and that was the other problem, is it was a fence, and you had some really weird provisions on fence, fences, so those are being cleaned up a little bit, so it was a double problem.
But yeah, no complaints from staff or working with Franco and Chris, like, everybody was very helpful, but just the process that we have seemed like a little, a little much for what it is.
Yeah.
And not in spirit with what, it seemed like my neighbors were more mad than I was, where they're like, can you believe they make you do that? This is ridiculous, like, it wasn't like.
Would that were always the case, would that were always the case.
Yeah, so that's the only report.
Well, we are, so.
Well, that's true.
That's a, I mean, Erica, would you consider that idea of having that minor?
I think it's an exceptional idea, I didn't, I was not aware we didn't have it.
Oh, okay.
So it is, it is a very good tool to streamline, sort of, minor tweaks, and it also helps homeowners make a decision for themselves on, you know, if I really want it, I'm, I'm gonna go for the longer process, if I, if I want a quicker process, I can tweak a few things to make sure I'm in the minor category, and then it's much more streamlined, so yes, we'll put that on our to-do list.
There are a lot of communities that just track what's in the municipal code, even though they're home rule, um, and, and if you weren't home rule, you couldn't really do this process, so.
Well, we are, so that's, yeah.
So, it's honorless, you're ever-growing, I guess.
It won't leave for nothing.
All right, cool. Kathleen?
Um, yeah, just, um, at this point, really looking more for updates from Phil regarding the gypsy moths, um, and working with getting those traps, so we can get counts and that kind of thing, um, I'm wondering if those have been put up yet, um, what the plan is there, and also to offer my yard and my trees, if you guys need other locations.
Great, thanks for asking, I was gonna mention my reports, um, as of today, we received mail, uh, okay, so, I picked up the traps from the Department of Agriculture. On Friday, I picked up a, um, all of the traps, we've got, the Department of Agriculture provided us with twenty-five traps.
Okay.
Uh, the mail today received, they're called lures, but it's essentially the, the pheromone that's put into the traps that attracts the flying males, and so, uh, starting tomorrow, we're gonna start hanging these traps, um, throughout the community. The Department of Ag has provided a guide essentially for.
How to place.
How to space these, and where to space them, and so on and so forth, uh, we do have quite an infestation village-wide, um, there are, there's a substantial, significant infestation in the terrace, we have some liquid estates, um, West Dundee has an infestation, and they know it, I informed them of it, um, that was brought to my attention, so.
And then, I, I guess, you know, this is, obviously, this is a process, but when do we know what the count is, and how we could be put into that higher class, so that we can get sprayed, so that we're not waiting yet another year, and ideally get sprayed this spring, when it makes sense, and if we don't qualify from, from the, you know, the state or the, whoever, whoever does that?
It would be the U.S. Forestry Service dollars that are essentially.
Right.
Conveyed through the Department of Agriculture, and we're, we're in what's considered a monitoring area, um, if we, if based on these trap counts and/or other observations, we're moved to an action area that might change our position for federal funding for, for the type of treatment.
And then do we have to go after the federal funding then, for that, or?
I haven't looked into that as of yet.
I guess, I just wanna make sure that we're taking the next steps and know what the next steps are, as well as the timing, so that we don't lose out, and if, if we don't qualify to be an action area, that we look at what it would cost for the village, the township West Dundee, to put together a coalition, um, to, to fund and do some spraying, so that we don't lose this natural resource that it's, it, you know, it's like losing the sequoias of, of the Yosemite, or wherever the fires are happening right now, um, at least for East Dundee, 'cause you, you can't replace these.
So the Department of Agriculture, there, the person, her name is Nancy Johnson, that I've been, that I've been in contact with, she asked me or suggested that I contact the company that they use for the spot, the, the fly, uh, aerial treatments.
Okay.
Um, via helicopter, um, and speaking with them, they've indicated that, in our situation, it, the, the cost is a function of the area, and how far it is from their, um, flight facility, which is located in Rochelle, Illinois, just, just west of DeKalb, and our treatment could be anywhere from ten to twenty thousand dollars, um, and it's, it's a function of, as I mentioned, a number of things, so.
My experience with grant money is that you aren't gonna get what you don't ask for, so we're probably gonna have to go to hit, but.
Yeah.
If the aerial method, or whatever, is the only one available to us, I'm a little nervous about that.
It's the most effective treatment.
Well, I suppose, but I mean, if that's the one they're willing to put money towards helping us accomplish, then I guess, you know, we have to look to that, but, we, I just think of age and age, you know?
Well, the product that they would use for spraying is a, is a, it's a, it's a natural product, product that's targeted specifically to the, to the caterpillar, the spongy moth caterpillar, um, it, it lands on the foliage of the trees, and the caterpillars consume the foliage and would effectively kill them.
Would you be able to contact them, kind of keep this posted, I mean, I have something more to manage, but it is what it is.
The company that conducts the aerial spraying?
Well, just keep in contact with the, that Department of Natural.
Oh, absolutely.
Whoever it is.
Absolutely.
So we don't, you know, miss out, we'd probably have to talk with West Dundee Carpenterville, too, 'cause they own a part of, um, like, what, a states area, for instance, Carpenterville's got their share of oak trees, too, and so.
And then there's the township, um.
Yeah.
Where you guys clean up.
The, yeah.
Library Springs.
Library Springs, Raceway Woods, all of that really needs to be addressed.
Well, the Department of Ag is very interested in hearing what are, what happens with our, um, with our traps.
Okay.
Um, I had someone come out from the Morton Opera Room, she met with me for a couple hours one afternoon, two weeks ago, and she's been, she, for, in recent years, has worked closely with the Department of Ag, and so she offered her thoughts.
Okay.
Um, so we've got certain folks in the professional world that are.
Are the burlap wraps have any, any effect?
You know what they do is they help prevent the caterpillars, now that the caterpillars have phased into the, um, the moth.
Yeah.
Phase, I guess, um, they have less of a, of a, of a role in, what it, what they do is it helps prevent the caterpillars from.
Climbing.
Climbing and up and down the tree, and it kinda disrupts that migration, if you will, 'cause they like the cooler, they don't like the direct sunlight during the day, so they, they migrate down the tree away from birds and, you know, in a cooler setting, and so that kinda disrupts that migration up and down the trees, so.
Okay.
So damage is.
No, no.
Just ahead of.
Yeah, sorry.
I have one more thing, the, the Department of Ag provided us with contact information with two communities, I believe it's Oak Park and Park Ridge, that are currently going through this themselves.
Okay.
And so I've been in contact with one of them, and.
Oh.
And I made contact the other one as well, so.
Do you know, uh, Park Ridge, Johansson?
That name, I don't.
He's my cousin's second, third, fourth cousin, whatever, something like that, yeah.
The name doesn't sound familiar.
He's the arborist, he's the arborist in Park Ridge.
I believe it's Park Ridge and Oak Parks.
Okay. All right, thanks, thanks, Phil, the other, um, thing, I was hoping, I don't know if you can comment on it, she's a chief on any kind of update on the event of July tenth, and how that investigation, is that closed?
Uh, not, I didn't know before.
Okay.
Is that it? Sarah?
Um, the events committee had a meeting today, we went through stuff for the Fox River Day, which, um, we are going to look at kind of combining something like the kayak, or we even talked about, you know, some, some attraction for residents along our river in addition to the cleanup, so kind of make it a big, do the cleanup, have an event, you know, really bring people out to the river, um, we have some good ideas for people to talk to about maybe getting the kayaks going, things like that, so we've got some action items there, um, putting a Halloween event together of some kind, um, like a scavenger hunt, passport, check off with all the businesses, you know, like, for a day, um, sort of combine it with trick-or-treating, why not, um, and then the big chair ceremony for when it's repainted, and we've got the new, um, Dundee logo on it, creating social media presence for it, having something on our village's website where people can post photos, and they can read the history of the chair, and things like that, so.
That'll be, that'll be the same day as the big tomato contest.
Yeah, yeah, I think so, in August, like, twentieth, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, twentieth.
This is twentieth.
I, I've had a, a resident ask me, too, about October, um, in the past, we, I don't recall, I mean, I guess we did, but, um, pumpkin decorating or carving contests.
That's a depot.
Yeah, that's a depot.
But we did do it last year, I don't know if it.
Yeah, yeah.
Did they have it last year, or the year before then?
Yeah.
Okay, so, yeah, okay, we'll just keep that one going, too, 'cause that one's, uh, seemed to be popular.
Yeah, oh, yeah, that, the giant, I mean, the giant tomato and all of those things, I just, that's when you love being a small town, right?
All right.
Um, the only other thing I had, um, I just wanted to, I, I know we had some conversations about the event at Rosie's this weekend, it was extremely well-attended, it was a great event for that fundraiser, um, the majority of the bands were fantastic, I can say that, because it was right outside of my door, um, and, you know, that is, I understand the residents' concerns, that's my house, right? That's pretty much right where I am, too, um, I'm glad that Gary was able to attend tonight, and kind of explain some of the stuff that had gone wrong, and the first time for anything isn't going to go exceptionally well, it's just not going to, it's a music event, first time, it's not going to go perfectly, um, but there are some things, you know, as a resident, to be concerned with, uh, I couldn't get my truck down the street, um, because it was pretty packed on both sides, and that's worse in the winter, so that's something we might need to look into, think about, I'm sure, your streets get nice and full when it's real busy, too, so, um, just something to think about, and also, they are having music on a more regular basis, which I tend to enjoy, but moving it inside more frequently, things like that, I think would be a good, you know, that's a.
Would you agree with the statement that this is new to this year, or with?
This year, it's become a bigger function of their business, in the years past, I mean, we're also talking COVID times, so, you have to balance that in a little bit, um, because pre-COVID times, it was not as much music, it was very much, you know, you have the touch tunes that's going, and I will call the bar and say, shut the back door, because I can hear it from my house if the door's open, and I can't if it's closed, so it's close the window, shut the door, and they're fine, but live music is becoming more of a thing, they're trying to be good about it and have it in the front, so that it doesn't face the residents, but I do understand our resident, my neighbor's yard connects to it, so, I can't hear it across the street if they're playing out front, but I'm sure he can, because of the flow of the air, right, so, something that we may need to look at, think about is, Friday and Saturday, I don't care, right? Friday and Saturday, keep the noise down after a certain hour, and we're good to go, like, you, we all live next to a bar, right? But, that is, there's music on a regular basis during the week, and it's become more of a thing this year, to have live music there, which I love, but I think moving it inside would be a pretty good compromise for that.
Might be, you know, an idea of, you have to, no live music outside after a set hour, and then they can just decide if they wanna have a guy playing from six till midnight, they just have to put him inside, you know?
Yeah, and that, that might be reasonable, and it, we might need to make it earlier during the week, 'cause there are kids and there's school, and.
Yeah, I, when I heard about it, I, I wasn't aware that this was happening outside the venue, so, Chris and I are gonna have a conversation about this, to make sure that they're operating within the guidelines of their zoning, and if it's not, you know, we'll come to the board with some kind of suggestion on how they can be compliant.
Yeah.
Um, but for right now, I don't have enough information to make an assessment of what the situation is, but we'll, again.
But, for right now, I don't have enough information to make an assessment of what the situation is, but we'll look into it and try to come up with a solution that's balanced.
I think everybody who lives in that neighborhood loves living next to Rosie's, you know, so I certainly don't want anybody thinking that it's a, like, terrible situation, but it's.
That was unintentional by them, I think he really met very, very well, and went a little, a little haywire.
It just, but there also was, like, the stage, the stage wasn't built until in the rain Friday night, and then literally six o'clock in the morning Saturday, the stage was still being built, because of the rain, but also pre-planning, and there, again, first time you have a big event, it's gonna be a problem. But, also the music during the week outside, usually it's good, so it's cool, but, you know, it's, I don't have kids, I'm trying to put to bed, so. And that's it.
Okay, good. Uh, Lance?
No report.
All right, Chief?
Uh, just to add to the Saturday event, 'cause you probably don't know, is that we had three total calls for the home use, and one of them was from West Dundee.
Kind of reverberates.
Yeah. Yeah.
And then I just wanted to, uh, remind everybody that August second is National Night Out, and we are participating in Carpenterville, Carpenter Park from five.
Fantastic.
Great, we've done that before.
Do we have that up on our Facebook page, and all that information?
It's been in the e-newsletter.
Okay, let's get a, like, a post out or something, just, something.
Great, we'll take part in that, August second. Chris, what you got?
No report.
Phil? Okay. Frank, nothing. Erica, last but not least.
No report.
No report? Wow, how about that? Okay, well, we're done with staff reports, that takes us, well, we did the non-agenda, uh, public comment. Are we going into executive session?
Yes.
Yes, we are, okay. Can I say one more thing? We've talked about possibly moving that permanently, the public comment on non-agenda amendments to the.
Beginning?
To the beginning.
That's true.
I think we should do that, personally. I don't know how hard that is to do, but.
Well, because it's in our code, we have to change our code.
Well, I mean, it's a text amendment, right?
I'll put it on the agenda.
Awesome.
Sure, we're, we're ready to do it, and we'll talk about the best way to do it.
Good enough, okay, if I could have a motion then to adjourn into executive session.
What items do we need?
We're not gonna be coming back in, correct?
We need C five, we need C five.
C five, so.
Any others? I have to make sure, 'cause I don't wanna have to read all of them.
Yeah, if, if Chief can give a report on the.
What does that fall under?
Does that fall under anything?
On, 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 oh, on that investigation?
Yes.
No.
Okay, I'll have him call you guys individually and give an update.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, no, it, it doesn't, not even close. I mean, I'm not saying it doesn't belong private, but there's just none of the exceptions that would work on it.
All right, I will move to adjourn into executive session, close to the public and media under the provisions of the Illinois Open Meetings Act, five ILCS, one twenty slash two, C five, acquisition of property, adjourning, we will not be coming back to open session, so we will be adjourning straight from close, executive session.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Coonsy?
Yes.
Trustee Britton?
Yes.
Trustee Saviano?
Yes.
Trustee Tribber?
Yes.
Trustee Satter?
Yes.
And President Lyman?
Yes, okay, appreciate everybody's time tonight, it was a long one. You don't have to go home, but you can.